Yeah, I'm gonna have to go and leave Capitol.
Don't you remember?
I'm not gonna miss it.
Yeah.
There's a shot.
Is he on that?
Is that true?
He was on the Chinese ship.
Being 5:30, I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order if I could. Thank you for being patient and thanks for coming in early on your workdays. Appreciate it. Could I have an acceptance of the agenda, please?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. The very first thing is we're here to meet the new Council on Aging Director, Linda Hayes. Hi, how are you? Please come forward. I was gonna sit right there. Well, thank you for coming. I've heard a lot about you.
Okay, thanks. Nice to meet you.
It's nice to always put a name to the face and so forth. We may or may not get down to Brook Street to see you, as you know.
Well, you'd be welcome anytime, of course.
I will.
Marty's our liaison.
Oh, good, good.
So I don't want to steal your thunder, but I understand you are the Assistant Director down in Duxbury.
In Duxbury, yes. I performed both as Activities Coordinator for four or five years and then Assistant Director for another five years. So it was a wonderful experience. I really appreciated being there and I'm thrilled to be here, to continue.
Senior population, that must be smaller down there.
Slightly smaller, not a lot smaller. Somewhere around the 5,000 number.
And I've heard a lot about their facility down there.
They get a lot of overflow from other towns, huh?
They do, we do. We serve a lot of the community, actually. Yep, many from Situate do come, but we're hoping to keep them here and maybe get some from Duxbury to come to us.
Well, welcome to Situate.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm just saying, you came at a great opportunity. You know, the town right now is in a state of, shall we say, transition.
Right.
So coming onboard, you're gonna be in the midst of it, so you can have a huge imprint
I'm looking forward to it.
On the future of the Council on Aging, our senior population, and just, it's a great opportunity, so we look forward to having you onboard.
Thank you, I agree.
I just add, you know, as John mentioned, it's a priority of the Board, you know, to get that area up and going.
Thank you.
So please come back to us and talk to us, and if you have questions or needs, you know, don't hesitate to come.
Wonderful. I have had calls from people already, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, good luck.
Thank you, Linda, look forward to working with her.
Another happy agenda item is a recognition of some of our own Situate firefighters. I think there were five total, three are here tonight, couple are on vacation. I'm gonna let Marty read a proclamation that we have prepared for you guys, and I understand Rick has something as well from the State House. If, you know, you guys would like to come forward, I know Mr. Elliott, Mr. Sanborn, and Eric Norland.
This is addressed to Captain Alfred P. Elliott, firefighter Raymond D. Sanborn, Jr., firefighter Robert M. McDonough, firefighter Eric M. Norland, firefighter John H. Bullman of the Situate Fire Department. Dear Captain Elliott and firefighters Sanborn, McDonough, Norland, and Bullman, the Board of Selectmen and the entire town of Situate would like to commend each of you on your swift and life-saving actions on the night of November 6, 2012. By all accounts, the fire that night moved rapidly and your professional action in fighting and checking for house occupants and ultimately saving a Marshfield Fire Department Lieutenant's life were nothing short of heroic. In the course of each day, members of our public safety teams are expected to keep people and property safe. This is their job. But there are certain events such as a winter storm flooding, fire, or auto accident which they are required to go beyond their regular course of duty. Each one of you did that on November 6, 2012, when you called upon your considerable strength and expertise to save a life. Every day, we are grateful for your dedication, compassion, and for a job well done. Sincerely, Board of Selectmen.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I think the chief has some proclamations from the State as well.
Along with the recognition from the Selectmen, great, thank you very much. The House of Representatives and the Senate also said, "Proclamation, 12, 5." I will not bore you with reading them.
Marty can read them.
I won't read them all, but no, I just recognize that these guys make me proud.
Just, in reading over the material, you were at the State House and the Governor spoke, as well as the State Fire Marshal, is that in attendance?
No, actually, it was over my teeth. They had the fire representative ceremony over there.
Guys, you make me proud. You really do.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We're fortunate.
Yeah, we are. Thanks again. I just wish all of our agenda items could be like those last two.
I know.
Keep it going, you're doing a good job.
Okay. Next agenda item is a presentation from the Flicker Study, from the windmill. I see, let people come and go as they need to and make some room, and Al and his group could come on up.
Come up?
If they would.
Over there. Go sit right here, Elizabeth.
I spoke to Al a couple, oh, half an hour ago in his office, he was kind of filling me in on, I had asked him, you know, is this the first study, the second study, and actually kind of told me it was the third study, and gave me a little bit of a background ahead of time, which I appreciate.
Thank you.
And I'll let you take over, Al.
All right, thanks. I'm gonna actually introduce and then write in the coattails of what these two folks from Vermont have done for us.
Well, they've got good stuff to say.
Selectmen down here is from Vermont, so you can play to him.
It's much warmer down here than it is up there.
I imagine it is.
Much different right now.
Well, in 2010, the town and Situate Wind LLC jointly applied to the planning board for a permit, special permit, to erect a wind turbine next to the sewer plant for purposes of generating renewable energy for the town. This is all old news. Our joint application for this permit included a study of the flat, Shadow Flicker, which is the shadow cast by the turning blades, and you've all seen it if you've driven down the Driftway on certain days in the fall or this early spring. We collectively hired a company called Atlantic Design Engineers out of Cape Cod, and they did a study, which is a, which you'll see what a study looks like. A study is of the geog, the mathematics of the sun going through the sky, the location of the turning blade, the location of people on the ground. So they completed a study, and that study predicted that the flicker impact at the nearest neighboring property, number 151 Driftway, would be in the range of 51 hours per year. And that would primarily be in the late fall, early spring, when the sun is at its lowest. In recognition of this, the property owner was provided with mitigation in the form of mature evergreen trees on the property line and $20,000 in cash, provided by the Situate Wind. Last spring, the owner of 151 Driftway commented that the flicker impact was greater than he anticipated, greater than presumably than predicted, and had made comments of, at town meeting, I think you saw the...
Video demonstration.
The video, and it was indication it was up to three hours per day, so we wanted to check into that. So at the request of the town, the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center commissioned a firm out of Vermont, EAPC Wind Energy Services, to complete a post-construction study to see if, in fact, things had changed. Had, was the, certainly the sun hasn't changed, but was the turbine at of a different location, a different height, were there some other factors that weren't considered? So with me here tonight, after completing the study, is Elizabeth King and Chester Harvey from EAPC to present the results of their study. Also, we have here tonight Niles Bolgen, who is from the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, who actually has helped find these folks and paid for the study that was done. And I also noticed that Seth Pickering, from the Department of Energy Resources is here tonight, and they were certainly involved in helping us get to this point. So, at this point, let me turn over the presentation, and you'll be live, going out to thousands of people in Situate. So you want to speak clearly into the microphone so they can hear you, and they'll be able to see the slides, as well as people.
Okay, thank you, Al.
At least tens.
At least tens, it sounds good. Well, thank you guys for having us. As Al mentioned, I'm Chester, and my colleague Elizabeth, and we're from EAPC Wind Energy, which is headquartered in Norwich, Vermont. Just to start out with, we all, I think, have an idea of what Shadow Flicker is, but for those that may not, it occurs when rotating wind turbine blades cast a pulsating shadow on an observer or their immediate environment. This is pretty similar to the experience of driving down a highway when sun is low, angle sun is shining through the trees, and you get that sort of pulsing effect on your windshield. But this is a much lower frequency than that, because the blades are spinning at a slower rate. So this is sort of a basic diagram of that. You get the shadow cast by the wind turbine on a house, and you can see the shadow is generally much larger than the sort of environment that it's being cast on. So the goals in this study were to estimate the Shadow Flicker by time and by location, and that involves identifying a number of receptors within the area, the immediate area of the turbine, and then documenting those areas with line of sight to the turbine, because a shadow can only be cast on a place where the turbine is visible.
A quick overview of the site. Situate Wind is composed of one wind turbine, which is a Sinovel 1500 at an 80-meter hub height, and EAPC modeled 683 receptors within a 1.5-kilometer radius of the turbine, which is a standard radius used when modeling Shadow Flicker.
Just to interrupt you there, 1.5, for purposes of equating it to miles, you know, quarter mile, 1.5 kilometer is what? Just so people... Okay, just so people understand.
Yeah, sorry, scientists are used to kilometers.
No, I'm terrified of something.
Um, so our methodology, first we did a desktop estimate of the Shadow Flicker, which we used a program called WindPro and WASP to do this. Within WindPro, we incorporate GIS terrain model and the daily sun paths based on the latitude, and also local weather data for the sunshine hours and wind data with wind speed and directional data. The receptors are identified using aerial images and GIS data, which Chester will go into a little more detail later. And for this model, we didn't incorporate trees or building obstacles. They weren't accounted for, so any forest isn't reducing the Shadow Flicker for this particular study. And then for the field documentation line of sight study, we did that by car from public streets. We just drove around and documented where we could or could not see the wind turbine. Flicker modeling, we did two different cases. The first was the theoretical worst case. For this, we assume, well, we calculate the maximum possible Shadow Flicker hours at a given location, and we do this by assuming that the sun is always shining and the wind turbine is always operating. This is basically a stepping stone to get to the realistic estimates, the realistic case estimates, which we also did, and for those, we incorporate the sunshine probability and the likely wind turbine operational hours. For this study, we used 61 years of sunshine data for Boston, which was found from the National Climatic Data Center, and we also had one year of onsite data measured in Situate, which we normalized to make it long-term representative.
What do you mean by that, your normal? Could you just explain that?
Sure. One year of data was modeled, but it's often that one year could be lower or higher than average, so it's too short of a time period. So we just measured it against a 30-year time set to decide if it needs to be adjusted up or down.
Great, thank you.
And that one year is for a very specific location, the 30-year time set is for a much broader area, but you can use the two together to hone in on that one area. So for, another part of this was identifying receptors. These are basically the points at which we're measuring Shadow Flicker, such as addresses. That's how you see them represented within this study. Generally speaking, we placed one receptor on each parcel, and then all receptors, as we explained earlier, are within 1.5 kilometers of the turbine, that's just under a mile.
Did I see earlier there was 683 receptors?
That's true.
So did you put 683 receptors on the field?
Yes. And so that is representative of every parcel within a 1.5-kilometer radius of the turbine. And there are two different types of receptors. Either a structure receptor, where you would see represented on the left, where we would visually identify the rough center of a house or other structure, on lots that didn't have a structure on them. We represent that with a point in the center of the lot, just to make sure that we're not biasing by only counting built parcels. So these are all 683 receptors. You can see many of them are pretty far away from the turbine. And then, sorry, that's pretty washed out on the screen. And then, there are slightly fewer residential structure receptors, 580. So there were six residences that were within 500 meters of the turbine. Those are the ones that are most affected by Shadow Flicker. And for those, we measured the actual dimensions of the structure based on tax records, and we estimated the dimensions that are facing the turbine in order to come up with a receptor size. For all of the other receptors, which are much farther from the turbine, they're outside of that 500-meter radius, we used a standard-sized receptor that was to represent a fairly large house, so this would be a conservative estimate. So a 10-meter wide by, sorry, 20 meters wide by 10-meter tall receptor, as I said, so intended to simulate the facade of a large, single-family home. And then, each of those receptors is modeled so it directly faces the wind turbine, so you're getting the maximum influence of any Shadow Flicker that comes off of it. And again, sorry, this is so washed out, but this sort of represents, you know, the 20-meter wide by 10-meter tall rectangle that's standing vertically. The turbine is casting a shadow on it, and that shadow is what we're measuring in the model. There's it a little bit closer up. You can see that the receptor is always facing directly perpendicular to the line to the turbine. So one of the discussions that we've had with Al and others is about the size of the receptor, and it's worth noting that a smaller receptor, if we were to measure just the size of a window as opposed to the size of the whole house, would produce a lower Shadow Flicker estimate. But it's because the shadow is so much larger than the receptor, it would probably be a relatively small difference.
So here are some of the flicker results that WindPro calculated. Using a realistic case, EAPC and Mass CEC determined two example thresholds of 10 or 30 hours of flicker per year, and WindPro calculated that there were 10 receptors showing more than 10 hours of flicker per year, and there were three receptors showing more than 30 hours of flicker per year, using the realistic case. Here's a table of just the top 10 receptors. You can see the address, the receptor type, the height, the width, and then the realistic case flicker, and you can see the three over 30, and these are the 10 that are over 10 hours per year.
So that worst case for an hour and 44 minutes per day, every day? The worst-case scenario? Excuse me?
Totally 69 hours.
So, yeah, the difference, the realistic case flicker hours per year is given sunshining, given probable sunshine and probable wind direction and speed that would make the turbine operate, that's what you would realistically have, but that is an estimate.
And it doesn't, the theoretical worst case, that's not every day. That's just the worst, theoretically, the worst day would have that many minutes per hour.
Not every day, it's on, in the worst condition.
Right.
And these results are included as part of the report.
So for that person, 69 hours, and the estimate was 51 hours.
Yep.
Per year?
Yes.
And I don't think we mention it later in the presentation, but we determined that some of the major factors, that that's a different number, is, like we mentioned, the different receptor size that we modeled, and also, EAPC had a different number of operational hours than the previous report. We had a higher number of operational hours, which would lead to higher number of flicker.
Everyone following so far?
So, you can't really see... Yeah, it's hard to see the middle lines, but here's a map of the realistic case hours per year. The red line is 50 hours, and the blue line is zero hours. I'm not sure if you can see the ones in between there, so, but that's what, so that's how you can look at this map and see where the receptor falls and within how many hours.
So outside of the blue is zero.
Right.
Inside, between the yellow and blue is five.
There's a 50, a 10, a 5, and a 0 line.
I think the interesting thing about this map is how quickly it falls off. You see, I mean, the red line is 50, the next line out, which is yellow, is 10. There's a pretty considerable drop-off immediately outside.
Again, those are hours per year.
Yes.
Why is that? Is it because of its location, or the topography, or?
Yeah, it's because of, it has to do with the sun angle, and so, you know, there's a fairly, there's a fairly long period of time when the sun is moving in an arc directly above the wind turbine.
In summer.
At a slow rate, you know. Yeah, relatively slow. I mean, clearly, the sun is moving at the same speed across the entire arc, but it covers a smaller arc distance in that time. And then when you get down toward the edges, you know, it might only be hitting something that's way out by the coast at the very end of the day for 10 seconds or something, and we still measure that.
One other quick question. In this model here, this still doesn't take trees or buildings into account?
That's true.
So that house that's way out there by the blue line?
Very likely seeing nothing at all. And we'll talk about that in a second.
We also have the similar map, but this time showing the theoretical worst case maximum minutes per day. And the red line is 100, the orange line is 1, oh no, I'm sorry, the red line is 180, the orange line is 120, the green line is 60...
That's yellow.
Yeah, 60, and then 30, and then 0.
So again, it drops off fairly quickly, away from the immediate vicinity of the wind turbine. In fact, the first two lines have no receptors in them at all.
Right.
Are there any questions about that? Should we go back a slide, or? Okay. Okay, this is where we start talking about, this is where we start taking trees and other obstacles into account, but not in a modeling context. This is in a, sort of a subjective visual context. So we did this assessment of line of sight to the turbine from public streets within the study area, just because we weren't granted access to private properties, and also for expediency of the study. So this does account for trees and buildings, which would block a line of sight, and they're not, these sorts of results are not typically incorporated into the model, because this GIS data is just very difficult to procure. We'd have to fly LiDAR, which would be fairly expensive. So these are the survey results for that study. The red represents roads within that radius where the turbine is visible, and this is, for those of you that are familiar with the area, I think, pretty straightforward. The Driftway has a line of sight to the turbine over most of its length. The access road to the golf course, you can see the turbine, and then certain points near the periphery of the study area. Most of those houses along the shore are actually, don't have any sort of visibility because of the trees and other houses. And this is just representing part of our documentation. From that, we took pictures from vantage points where you could see the turbine to show basically how exposed it was. This is on, yeah, this is on the Driftway. I believe so. Yeah, it's the first house that's not in the woods.
But it's the second closest one.
It's a third, actually.
Yes, third, yeah, third.
There's an antique behind it, and then there's also the house that's directly next to it.
The, yeah, and just to make clear, the lot that's right behind that is the only lot where an exception was made, and we put two receptors on that lot, because there are actually two residential structures on that same lot, and they're, they're both so close to the turbine. Any questions about that? Okay, so in summary, we identified nearly 700 receptors, and this was surely a little bit overkill, but we wanted to make sure we were getting everything we, that, you know, could possibly be affected. We estimated that 10 of these receptors, eight of which were residential structures, experienced more than 10 hours of Shadow Flicker per year. At least one of those receptors, which is not residential, is the golf course building, for instance. And then, the turbine is visible from the road adjacent to these receptors. And that is our presentation.
Anybody have any questions?
One quick question. You know how you, you got the number of 69 hours of average time compared to the 51 before? The trees and stuff are not taken into account, or in that number, or they are not?
They are not.
So that, is there any way to indicate what that, or it wasn't in the first one either, right?
Correct.
So it is apples to apples?
There are, there are some differences. In any study, you start out with assumptions. So the first study had assumptions about the size of a receptor that would be looked at, and that was a window on a house. This study, the assumption was made, well, let's look at what it was the whole house. Now, the second significant, a significant difference between the studies is that the number of hours that the turbine would be operating, their assumption was it would operate 23 hours per day, okay? In the first study, they assumed it would operate a little over 20 hours per day. And in fact, the actual data from the turbine is it runs around 20.3 hours per day. So the fact that we made assumptions for this study that would run longer, you mean it's more opportunity, more hours when flicker can occur.
Well, I guess my question is, if you did, you know, how much impact did the window compared to the wall have, and how much impact did the 20 compare to the 23 have? I mean, does it bring it more in line? I mean, or, I guess, then you look at the assumptions and say, which one is the right one to use? The hours, not so much, but the size of the model?
I think it's the opposite, actually. I think that the size of the receptors had some effect, but it was smaller, and the operational hours had the largest effect, because that's a little more direct into the calculation.
But if you did it at the 20, the actual, what, would that bring that 69 down to?
I don't have a number for you. I can't do that calculation straightforward. And I, EAPC used the higher operational hours, because that's just the data we had access to with the one-year normalized data. We didn't have any actual turbine operational data, so we didn't have any proof to say what the actual operational hours were on an hourly basis.
That'd be interesting to find out. I mean, it seems like it'd be an easy...
Let me just jump in there. The model doesn't take an input of, like, hours per day. It takes an input of wind speeds for an entire year, and then acknowledges which times the turbine would be operating based on a cutoff threshold. And so, there isn't really a point at which we can, you know, plug in this many hours per day, this many hours per day. You input gigabyte time series into it.
I see. So you're, you're saying, when should it be operational, not when is it actually operational?
Yeah, if this, we use the times when it hypothetically would have been operational during the year when the wind was tested for the onsite wind data.
So what we're doing is, we are exploring, since there is a difference, 69 versus 51 hours, we are exploring several options to look at, how we might consider further affecting or reducing the impact, one of which is, I think, sound, the wall that's along the mass pipe, for instance, or billboard, that sort of thing, to cut down on the amount of time when the shadows flickering on the individual residents. There's only one residence here we're concerned about. Some, until the shade trees are tall enough, I mean, a significant number of trees are planted there, but they need to grow. Also, there's some technology that is emerging that we may be part of a testing on, to see if there's ways to physically change how much flickering occur at a particular location. So, we're working, Situwind, we are both working together on that, and we'll figure out.
And that's really just the 151?
Yeah.
Al, are there any type of, like, mitigations with the windows themselves? In other words, instead of putting up trees, or abrevities, or, you know, trees that grow, which we've already done, but I'm saying, the next thing is to go to the windows and say, you know, is there any way of, like, when flickers impacting that home, they can just, almost like blinds, shut it down? Not blinds, but special, that literally eliminates all types of...
Funds and things like that. I mean, there were funds provided to the homeowner in recognition that there would be a shadow impact on their house, which is in the commercial zone adjacent to the sewer plant and the most plowed and the winter line. Those funds were provided by Situwind, a amount of $20,000, to help the neighbor deal with that. We're just looking at something we could do that is not more additionally to help out. We probably don't want to go on the private property, do anything.
No, no, I just was wondering, in concert or in partnership with Situwind, would they consider, and I'm sure there must be some kind of alternatives that would be not so costly, but something along that line with the windows, because if they could shut off that side, granted, I suspect they're still going to see it in the front, because it's impacting the whole area, but, I don't know. That was just, instead of putting more trees, or a billboard, or some kind of wall that's kind of obtrusive, maybe they could do something more less obtrusive. That's all.
Sure.
Just a quick question. I was in, I was in Oklahoma, or somewhere, where they had a, they had a wind farm, and it was a particular area that they were trying to block the, probably the flicker. I didn't know anything about this at the time, but they used almost a netting that they use on a golf course, and it's very high, and it actually can be adjusted. And it doesn't allow the, it doesn't allow light to pass through it, but it allows the wind to pass through it. It's interesting stuff. I think it was Oklahoma.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Thought you were alluding to, Al. So I thought you were alluding to something along those lines.
It's like a, it's a netting of some sort.
And also, along that, you know, the case of blocking the shadow before it gets out, have we put trees on town property as well as their property?
Yeah, we have. Yeah, we've got a berm, actually, between, if you go down to the sewer plant, you know, you go down kind of a slot like this, there's a berm up there.
Yeah.
And those trees have been planted on top of that. So it's not a huge problem to block the berm.
Any other questions or comments?
Well done.
Yeah, I learned a lot. Thank you very much for coming all the way down from Vermont. We appreciate it.
Hopefully you're not driving back tonight.
Actually, I did drive down, uh...
You are?
It got snowed out.
Oh, you came down?
Yeah, we're halfway here.
They should have been able to make that. Come on. You can get through that snow.
We have snow tires, right?
Probably Subarus, that's good. I was going to say Sabs, but they're out of business.
I was going to say Vermont, I was saying, I don't have a...
I'm safe, all right?
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Before I just move on to the next one, I see the chief here, and I made a mistake. I just wondered if I could ask Tricia, part of Tricia's report was to give us an update on the storm, and I see, you know, Chief Judge here, and I apologize, I had it written down, and I looked right beyond it. So, if I wouldn't be all right with the board, if I could just get this information from Tricia and the chief? Turn, turn it up and turn.
So, I got pictures, just fine, with damage, so you can give the overall.
I want to put that picture.
Yeah, I have that one, too.
Just, while you guys are getting ready, obviously, everyone knows I wasn't here, but it looked like we were getting prepared for another blizzard of 78, as far as all the media that came into town was rolling into town, and...
They were hoping for a blizzard of 78.
I think that's what they were looking for. They set up, and I think I heard for the second time Marty told me tonight, that Situwind made the front page of a newspaper in Las Vegas.
Front page.
Some destruction that really didn't happen.
You can go give them an update on what happened.
So, I'll turn it over to you guys, but I, you know, I think it was a job well done.
As I said, the storm came in, I believe, the second, we had, actually, we had four high-tide cycles that flooded. So that was, you know, as the, you know, the first one wasn't so bad, but progressively, they were going to get worse. And I, this is like the best response we've had from the residents, that they, everyone heeded our warnings, and the warnings from the meteor to evacuate, and they did. We did not have one call for an evacuation during the storm, which is the first.
Wow.
So, I don't, you know, I think people have finally started to get it, and, you know, it was, it was really good, and I thank them. Yeah, and they said, they, we had flooding over, you know, the usual spots, you know, this is one of the Lighthouse Rebecca, Turner, Oceanside, Glades, and a few other, the usual sections. But, like I said, the DPW and public grounds made quick work of getting the roads open. You know, at first, it was just, basically, for safety vehicles, get one lane open, but then they went back, and, you know, they, they made it usable for the public. So, the, you know, the police, you know, the police and fire, the residents made our job easy by evacuating, and, you know, staying off the roads, too, which was big. But, like I say, during the nighttime, when it was snowing heavily, it was, you know, it was blizzard conditions out there. It was treacherous to be out there. And all you saw on the roads, basically, were people working, either police, fire, or the snowplows. And they did a great job keeping up with it, because every, you know, they'd go by, and a half an hour, the wind would blow, would drift it back in the road, so they kept up with it. Not only after that, but they were done plowing, then they had to stop and go start cleaning off the roads by the beach to get all the stones and sand off it. Yeah, they did a wonderful job. Anything?
Yeah, sure. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
So, as the chief mentioned, we had the usual streets that had the overwash and the flooding. Glades has been completely undermined again. We have temporary fill in there. Fortunately, we hadn't spent the $80,000 to restore it. That's going to be done this spring, but it was hit pretty hard. The police department had 51 calls for service, but of those 51 calls, 38 were officer-initiated, which meant the officer saw something on patrol and radioed in and said, "We need more sawhorses," or "There's an electric box loose," or something like that. Compared to the storm last year, there were 157 calls within the same 24-hour period. The height flooding stage was two feet lower than it was last year for this storm comparatively. In terms of public facilities, we had a couple of issues, again, at the Situitt Harbor Community Building, a couple of shingles off the roof, water came in to the carpet area and wet the carpet. Fortunately, the new carpet's being laid tomorrow, and the Situitt Maritime Center fared fine. I do have just six pictures, and I want to tell you what the physical damages, the DPW has been out inventorying. The, the physical infrastructure we have, the ice and cold have limited it somewhat, and we're out there in full force as soon as the temperatures improve. This is actually the biggest problem we've had from the storm. You're looking at the east side of Musquashkaet Pond, and you can't tell in terms of degree, but a good portion of that berm is gone. You see where the cobblestones are, right there, and then it looks like it changes a little bit to a different kind of stone. That's a huge gaping dip there. Coastal Zone Management is coming out for a field site with the DPW and Kevin Cafferty tomorrow. That's going to be very costly to repair. And we have a situation over there where there's very little space now with that berm gone. And if that, obviously, if Musquashkaet overflows, we have real issues going on the backside onto Hathley, and we have brand-new asphalt, water, and sewer pipes there, so that's something we're going to be looking at. This is a brand-new deck that was put last year, where the original seawall breach is. That, that deck probably would have come down eventually, even without the storm, because it wasn't secured properly to the home. So, a lot of folks had deck issues, a lot of deck pieces were floating down Oceanside and Surfside. And what happens when debris goes down with the flooding is it clogs the catch basins, and that exasperates the flooding. This is another issue we have. This is a chunk of the seawall between, I believe, 100 and 110 Oceanside. Now, that seawall is not breached, I want to be really clear about that. The top portion of it severed from a very, very solid base. So that's not cracked, it's not undermined right now, but as we know, repairing any seawall is time-consuming just to get at it from the back end. So, because this blizzard wasn't something that is going to be MEMA or FEMA-eligible, that's another item that we'll have to put on the list in terms of repairs. And then, you just have another deck there. The third and final area that we're concerned about, which unfortunately is really not under our control, is, this is the, is it north end, west end of Fourth Cliff, where the Army Base is? We had brought this erosion issue to their attention last year, and Chief Stewart, former Chief Brian Stewart, was in touch with them about our concerns about this area, because they suffered so much erosion. We were there yesterday walking it, and as you can see, that has eroded even further, so that the roadway has now caved in. That piece of black that you see that says asphalt, that looks like it has a little brown or orange on it, that's actually been spray-painted danger. That's what it says on it, and that was on the road before. So it already said danger before it completely eroded. The fencing there, as you can see, has fallen in. So that's something that, again, we are going to have to be in touch with the powers that be at the Army, but that's, that's pretty critical right now in terms of the amount of erosion that that sustained in the past few years. So, that's that for that. I do want to thank a number of other people in addition to the great efforts, once again, of police and fire. The DPW started sand, I mean, salt and snow removal operations at 3:00 AM on January 1st, and still has not stopped clearing. They had the ways open, almost every way was open for emergency access, except for Seventh Avenue, as soon as the storms stopped. I think I told some of you, we had problems with the vehicles icing up because the weather was so cold during the storm. The other people, I can't say enough about Mike Breen and his crew, but Mike worked non-stop, Kevin Cafferty. We had contingency plans in case there was a problem with the seawall. We had positioned armor stone in areas in case anything happened, so we could mobilize that quickly. We also have a contingency plan in place in case Central Ave should have a problem in breach. The problem we're facing now, and we'll talk about this a little later in the budget overview, is even though Situitt has always had storms, the frequencies of this storm is what is increasing. So we had four storms last year, another major storm already, seven major storms in four and a half years. And that is, you know, we don't know what we can't see in terms of the seawalls and the underpinning of Central Ave River Street. We had Flanagan River Street this time, too, which we usually don't have. I want to thank John Roser and Bill Sheehan. They were here on standby the entire time, posting all the storm advisories as they were written. And so, Bill was doing it from his home in Marshfield with a very sick child, so I really appreciate that. And John Roser was here, streaming everything on cable instantaneously. One of the new things we did with this storm is, we have a Twitter account, and I tweeted every time there was a storm advisory that I had posted on the website. And within, I think, eight hours, there are 158 followers on the, on the Twitter account. So that's a new thing we did, but we host our own website now, so if Comcast should go down for any reason, like it did last year, even though our website is not active and we have no electricity or cable, tweeting allows people to still get all the updates. So, so I think it worked well. And as always, we have a number of our state representatives reach out to us and ask us if we need any assistance. I really appreciate that. Representative Cantwell, Representative Bradley, we heard from, we heard from Senator Markey's office. The governor's office also contacted chief through media, I think it was, after he saw Friday night the flooding images on TV, and offered any assistance he needed. We knew that wasn't as serious as it could have been, but it was very helpful nonetheless. And there was one more thing I was going to say, but I, oh, the utilities. We really, I mean, we really had issues three years ago with the utilities. For the first time for this storm, we heard from every single utility company with emergency contact numbers. We were able to post them, obviously, for customer service, but we had emergency dial-in numbers for Comcast, Verizon, N-Star, National Grid was here in town, and that's the first time that's happened, so I also want to commend them as well.
Very nice to hear.
Can I add to that list?
Please.
Tricia, I want to thank you. I was, talked to you quite often, and I think you stayed here for, you know, 48 straight hours, it seemed like, you know, driving home, to get a couple hours of sleep and coming back, so.
Usually.
And I saw the chief in the, in the building quite often also. So, you know, you did a great job, and you put in a ton of hours for this storm also, and you keep everything moving, so thank you for your, your time and effort as well.
I appreciate that, Tony. As most of you know, I said earlier, I wasn't around. Thank you very much. Thanks, Rick. Okay, moving on to agenda item number six is the vote for the solar ray permit fee. I believe, the abatement, I believe we had charged 1% on this, on this project, $286,000.
Thank you.
Here to discuss, we should rescind that, give it back.
Thanks.
For you.
Good. With me is Derek DeJoux, who is another long-distance traveler, just drove from midtown Manhattan to downtown Situitt this evening, and arrived about 10 minutes ago. Derek is with Situitt Solar LLC. It's a subsidiary, or, sorry, a limited liability corporation set up specifically for our, for our solar array. And there's a number of entities you'll hear about. You've heard about Brightfields, you've heard about Sincarpa, you've heard about Main Street Power, Morgan Stanley. It's all rolled up into Situitt Solar LLC. Derek was here early in the project when we were back in the days of, how do we get this thing going? Looks like there's some delays, 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 and was instrumental in pushing the whole thing forward. One of the things we did a summer, in the summer of '12, was to say, get your building permit and get this thing started. Earlier on, we had talked with the Brightfields and the other entities working on this project that the building fee, we would have to look at adjustment of the building fee, because our building fee is based upon 1% of the cost of constructing a house. And now, you know, when you construct a house, you have plumbers, you have plumbing inspectors, wiring inspectors... wiring inspectors, you inspect the foundation, inspect three or four times during the course of building the building. So there's quite a bit of, of involvement of the town in terms of doing the inspections. And so on that basis, the fee has been established for years by the Board of Selectmen at 1% of the cost of building a house. So a typical house construction of $250,000 for the house itself would amount to a $2,500 building fee. As we were pressing to get started on this project, we said, get your building permit as a show of faith that you're moving forward with this project. And so they added up $86,146,000 as a show of faith that they would get this project going. The, the issue is, is that 1% of the cost of this, of the construction of this solar array doesn't really represent by any margin the amount of work that the town had to do in terms of inspecting it. And part of the state law is that we are allowed to establish fees, we, you are allowed to establish fees to recover costs that the town directly incurs. Therefore, building a house, a lot of inspections, a lot of cost. But we're not allowed to establish fees that are disproportionate with what our costs are because, and that's considered a tax and we're not, there are only, there are only taxes, certain taxes that, that have been granted to the town's ability to apply. I guess I'm not saying that properly, but John, you can chime in as you want to here.
We did.
And in fact, that was tested by Emerson College versus the city of Boston. And the conclusion was that the city of Boston was overcharging for some fees, not commensurate with the amount of work that the city had to provide. So what Situate Solar has asked is that the building permit be abated or rebated by 50%. That would reduce it to a $46,000 fee, which of course, which they've already paid. And that $43,000 fee, that, that still exceeds our costs by a goodly amount. We've made us, I think, three or four wiring inspections and basically just for the connection to the pole. And we made a couple of building inspector visits to just make sure that the foundation was right. The developer, Situate Solar, paid all of the costs of the inspection by the DEP, paid all of the costs for the permitting to National Grid. And so our, our costs are very, very small, which was our design. And they, they would be willing to, and are asking for a reduction to 50% of that fee, which would bring it down to $43,000, which we would keep and the other we would refund to them.
They'd like cash back or would we play some type of?
Yes. We've already taken the cash in.
Right.
Okay. And yes, they would like, we would have brought this to you back 18 months ago, but at that point, if you remember, there was some ranker and gnashing of teeth on our part, are we going to build this thing or not? Tell us what you're going to do. In addition to charge, getting the building fee, we said we want the building fee. We subsequently said, we want you to put up a, a full amount of liquidated damages, $109,000 in, in the anticipation that maybe they don't finish on time. They, they actually beat the schedule for when they, at that point, promised they would be finished. We kept $36,000 of that liquidated damages. So I, I have to say they've done, after we finally got going, they've, they've gone the extra mile and the thing's operating and there's a.
Do you want to talk about that at all? Like we had, we had that discussion in your office a little while ago. I know we don't control mother nature, but you know, you, you had, showed me the predictions on your laptop in the other room that, you know, this is what it's producing per hour, per day. And you were quite excited.
Yeah, it's, it's exceeding the output predicted. If you look at what should be the ideal day, it, for that weather, it exceeds that. So it's, it exceeds what the expectation was in terms of output. Thus far, we've received credits from National Grid for $96,000 and we've paid them $34,000. So we're ahead already in terms of what we are expecting as revenue from this operation.
Over what time period?
Since October, October 1st through December 1st. Two months.
A net of about 60?
60. So it's a little, we were thinking 250 and it's around.
Now, some of that's the startup, you know, the startup, we did, we got credits from National Grid, but they, don't listen, but they didn't bill us for like two weeks of operation. So we got a little bit of extra ahead there. You're not going to go back and bill us, sorry. No. Good. So it's, I, I can yet predict exactly what our ongoing income will be from this thing. We have, we are working with a couple of other local municipalities because we may make too much electricity and we have to sell some of it locally. And that's one of the little projects that Patricia's assigned me to go do is go take care of this, which I am working on. But, and we've got a couple of very good opportunities there. How, so we're ahead of the game. They did what they said and I would, I just think in good conscience, the reason you probably wonder why I'm pushing this since I'm a townie, it's just that this is kind of what we committed to do to these people. They've delivered what they said they would deliver and I personally feel like it's appropriate that we.
Well, the way you just explained it, the 1% kind of covers our costs for the plumbing and Neil and so forth for these inspections, but it's, we haven't been out of pocket nearly that much. Few inspections by the electrical and, and the concrete footings and so forth, so it's.
We might have 12 hours of inspections in it and something.
And the idea is just to cover our costs.
Yeah. And it, so we're, we're way to the good on half of this building fee and I think it's, it's.
Tony smiling, you want to say something?
I was just wondering how Al felt about it.
That's how you really feel, Al. Anyone else?
Well, just a quick question. Was there a contract? I mean, did you expect to get a rebate on this or was it said that your, the fee is 1% of, of the fee? And then I, I saw a letter later that said, you know, we, we'd like to get 50% of it rebated. I didn't, was there any expectation of that or was?
It was, there was an ex, I can address that.
Either, either of you, whoever.
He wasn't here at the beginning, but even at the, at the time of bidding, the questions were asked by the people who, we've got 11 contractors bidding for this. They all asked about this building permit fee. This building permits fee seems disproportionate. Now, in a way, I wasn't authorized to speak on this matter and, but we were thinking that yes, this made some sense, that we know that on the solar, the solarized Situate program where residents would put up solar cells on top of their house, we cut the, we cut the building fee for that in half. So if you put solar cells on your house, the fee was only half of that cost. So there was some expectation, that was the path we were going down. As it turns out, Tricia has looked at what other towns have done and other towns have, the fees are all over the place and lower, with one exception. And so we were, yes, from the beginning telling the bidders and then the final contract awardee, but again, it's just me speaking and me and the energy committee and others that, that was what we thought would happen, but we weren't committing to town. We can't commit the town. Only you can commit the town. So it, we, we led them down that path.
And this has nothing to do with the excess? There was $32,000 worth of penalties?
No.
So this is?
Yeah.
Separate from that?
Mm-hmm.
I guess there's a timing issue because we already have the money. It's in a, it's in a fiscal year. Tricia, are there any issues in terms of if we do choose to abate this, how, a better way to do it?
We pay it out of revolving fund receipt revenues, I think. Or rent.
Just pay it out of the, the receipts that we get.
Out of the, the net from this.
The revolving fund for the solar.
And do you guys care how we pay it or over what period or, I mean, obviously as quick as possible, but?
Sure. Yeah. But I, I think the, do we care how? I, I don't, I don't think we have a preference or we weigh in. I don't think we've got a dog in that fight.
Let's take it to BitCon.
The Bitcoin?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I have no issues with it. What it kind of, what I was thinking about it when I was looking at it was, one was how it was going to be paid. You addressed it in your memo. And how, in a prospective approach, how do we approach it? The reason, what kind of stuck with me was just the issue of we, we charge 1% on building permits going forward. And in this situation, we're suggesting that, you know, it only took about 12 hours to go through it. Will this set a precedent for the future of anybody who decides to come in with like, look, I'm going to be doing renovation or building a house and you're going to charge 1%? You know, I really need to know what the actual hours are going to be because frankly, that's what we're kind of setting here. We're adjusting it. So that was one thing I was going to raise to the board, which I think is kind of potentially a problem in the future. It's not your problem, so that's not your issue. The only other thing I had was, it was your request to have it reduced to 50%. So you're accepting if we grant that, that's the amount that would be paid. Okay. The third thing I was just curious about was what you were hitting on, which was like, when we first initially did it, did we, did we say this was non-refundable or based on the building permit, once it was issued, it's non-refundable?
We said we'd deal with the question of abatement later.
And that, that was the only thing that I kind of went through with Tony, but aside from that, I have no issues with, with granting the abatement.
John, one, Marty, one quick thought. If you're concerned about the 1% thing, would you consider just abating the penalty? If you think we're not setting a precedent?
Oh, the $32,000?
Yeah.
Well, I think the one thing I liked is kind of like the policy of if you're going to be asking for a building permit under kind of, I know there's a statute with green technology, that you know, that's the purview of the board to do just that because this is a good thing that's going on. We want to encourage people and if it means reducing a charge that the town has, I think that's, that's reasonable because we're trying to encourage people in behaviors to do good things ultimately for the environment and it's going to be better for them. So I like that concept. If we do that with other solar panels, I think we can certainly rest on that and say, based on the prior practice, we're willing to reduce it by 50%.
Would you do reduction in the beginning, John? Or would you wait and see how it goes? In other words, because if something like this drags on and it isn't a perfect scenario, wouldn't you wait and abate it later on or would you say half percent? You know what I mean?
Probably if they were coming saying from a building permit, we would reduce it by 50% when they first asked for it. It's no sense paying the town and then having to have the town hold the money for potentially a year to get it abated if you're going to be doing something the town would like to do in the first place.
The only point I have is this, this was a smooth project and went well. Everything was good, but we could end up into a, a situation where it would cost the town money. That's the only thing that would concern me.
I'd have to look at.
Cross that bridge when we come to it.
That's what I'm saying, so exactly.
Then I'd be like, the costs are incurred, then you could say, these are the man-hours or, or person-hours that caused the town the issue. But those are my thoughts on it, but it's kind of an interesting query that we just discussed.
Well, I don't have a problem like you, John, reducing this by 50%. And then if two years down the road, another project order come up and it goes along these same lines or as Marty said, there's a lot of, whether they're legal issues or environmental issues that we have to deal with, then we're not really held to a half of 1%.
Every case on its face, basically.
But like John said, you want to encourage things like this.
Absolutely.
So just one last thing, as John mentioned, is there a document that says if we rebate it 50%, then we're, we're both, both sides are good on it?
We're square.
We have to have the town council draft something like that or?
No, no, they sent us a request to abate it by 50% and only you can waive it. So that's why it's before you.
Now, I noticed from T. Emery Post, he was requesting a 50% rebate value of $36,670. But is that the amount that they're looking for? Okay. I just, oh, I ask that because the.
Half of it is more than.
We might have missed that.
It's about 43.
It's off by, yeah, that's wrong.
So the 36 is correct?
No, the 40 something.
We, the building permit fee was $86,146.20.
So just divide that by two.
So it would be 43,000 as opposed to 36.
Did you see that letter, Al, though? With the, with that number?
Yeah.
The rebate number? All right. Thank you.
I think it might have been misstated in that letter that we sent.
Okay.
Anyone else have any more discussion before John? Sounds like he might make a motion.
One last question I have to Derek, right?
Yes.
I see it's Situate Solar. Is it capital I as in one LLC? That's what the letter says here. I noticed here it just says Situate Solar LLC.
It's just one.
Okay. That's what I need to know. Okay. I move the Board of Selectmen to rebate 50% of the building permit fee paid by Situate Solar, Roman numeral I or one, LLC for construction of the solar array on the Driftway landfill.
I have a motion in a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for getting it done.
Likewise, Troy.
The polar vortex.
Agenda item number seven is a discussion in a vote for some inter-fund borrowing for the school department. Pam.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
So we're looking to do some inter-fund borrowing on the April 9th, 2013 town meeting as part of the capital plan. Article 3B, school-wide security was authorized in an amount of $150,000. And Article 3D, school technology was authorized in an amount of $150,000. So Paul has requests, Paul Donilon, the school business manager, has requested that we borrow this money. So instead of doing a big bond, we're just going to do an inter-fund borrowing and when we go to borrow more money this year, we'll just include that in the bond. So we'd like to borrow it from the stabilization fund and get his bills paid.
So has he already done it?
He has.
So we know what, he hasn't already done it?
Yeah.
Wants to.
Okay.
But Warren is waiting.
So there was like a three-phase, three, $300,000 phase project. Which phase is this?
Second. The second phase. There was a two-phase.
What are we talking about?
School technology.
Technology, right.
So this is the second phase of the security too, though?
Security's all done. We compressed it into two. It was supposed to be three. They were both three and we compressed that.
Okay. So this is phase two of technology?
Yep.
And then both things are completely done?
Well, hang on a second.
Well, they're waiting to be.
One says for school-wide security and then the other's technology. Did they already use money for the techno, for the security and now they need the, use the, what we're going to use for security for technology? So technology's for $300,000?
No, they need it for both, but, but for the ones that they were authorized for. They have school technology, $150,000 and security for.
Oh, they've done the security, now they have to pay for it?
Correct. Well, they're waiting for the.
So it's kind of confusing because the same numbers, they were both originally, school technology and school security were both three phases. We compressed school security into two. And then school technology came in at a lower cost and that has actually been completed. So even though you think she, Pam thinks it's phase two, it, this is the last part of this part of school technology in terms of their, what they plan to do with the fiber optic. In FY15, the school is going into a second tier phase approach, but both all the school security and the school's technology that you've seen in capital the last few years are done. Those phases are all done with this last borrowing.
Okay. Good.
Motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the sum of $300,000 from the stabilization fund to be used for Article 3 from the 2013 annual town meeting capital improvement plan and item B and D as permitted by Mass General Law, Chapter 44.
Motion. And I add a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Next is to award a contract for some water pipes and fittings. Thanks, Kevin.
Good evening.
Looks like we've got some new backup most recently about some, the bid results from the three suppliers.
Yes.
Okay. I just noticed that now. They look like they're pretty close, 290 to 321.
Our lowest bidder was about 10% low. In this, the contract award value is not for $290,000, which it shows in there, it's unit prices. It just establishes the unit prices for all the different items that the water department could potentially order. And it's a time-weighted average so that we would be able to purchase in compliance with 30B, all the miscellaneous parts and pieces that the water department uses on a typical yearly basis.
Oh, it's not, nothing to do with the new project?
No, no, not at all. No, no, not at all. It's just, we do a standard contract yearly, and then we can renew it every year and max out at three years. But this establishes the unit prices for all the parts and pieces that they could use. Not everything, but I mean, we listed 120 items on this bid that they typically use.
And the company's fairly local in Denham, so if we had to, like I've heard in the past, we could run to Denham without too much of a problem to get pots.
Well, it varies. If it's an emergency, and we found the pots and pieces in, at Hodley, right down the street, and they're readily available, you know, and people without water and without fire protection, we'd go to the nearest location we could to get those pots.
Oh, we would. All right.
If need be. I mean, we'd use good business practice, but to save, you know, we have to be intelligent about it, and to save a dime, you know, sometimes, you know, we have to consider...
It ends up probably costing you in the long run anyway, because you've got guys already at a hole, right?
Right. But hopefully, hopefully by doing this, the water department can think in advance and say, we're always going to run into situations where we find something that we don't expect. The thickness of a pipe is different, but nine times out of 10, if they're going to do a job, they can think about it in advance, order their parts, and have the parts ready on site, and have them delivered, because this is the delivered price from the supplier.
Correct.
So hopefully, we're not in a panic running out there all the time.
Right. Where's Sumner?
Sumner and Dunbar is in Canton.
Okay.
Not much difference.
And Hodley and Sons is in Rockland.
Motion?
Please.
Move the board to selectmen, vote to award the contract at the unit prices outlined in the bids submitted by HD Supply Water Works, Inc., from Denham, Massachusetts.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Great, thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. Moving right along, as agenda item number nine is an update on the market and economic development study. Thank you, Laura. How are you?
Good evening and Happy New Year.
Congratulations on your award.
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Glad to let you know.
Thank you very much. I just want to give you a quick update on what's going on with the economic development study. They were originally going to present the report a couple of weeks ago, and before the report kind of went live, Tricia took a really thorough look at it, and she and Matt Smith, who's the planner from MAPC, and I met to discuss it. There were some tweaks that really needed to be made, because when the public looks at this, it's not really just the economy that's discussed in it, it's also, to some extent, what progress the town has been making on some of the economic issues, and some of the things that the town does, the planners at MAPC really wouldn't know that much about. They basically did a really great job, but there were some things like the day passes that were being given to the hotels for the beaches, and, you know, some little things like that, that they just didn't really have any information about. So they're, in the process of making those tweaks, I'm hoping that at the EDC meeting tomorrow night, they can get the finished report then, and then they'll take probably a little bit of time to digest it and see if they want to change anything, and then it'll come back.
I was just... No, go ahead, Tony.
No, I was just going to ask if we were going to get a copy of it to read before I see this...
I just got this tonight. It was in this yellow folder. Is this a draft of it, Laura?
Yeah, that was the original draft that the board asked for after its last meeting. That's been, as Laura indicated, revised and edited, and I don't know when the ETA is on the final one.
I think the optimistic ETA is tomorrow.
Oh, good, good. And EDC's meeting tomorrow night, so...
Yeah.
Something we want to put on for our future agenda item, ask them to come in and...
Yeah, probably the next meeting.
Okay.
We postponed them, they were all going to come in at your last meeting, and it was postponed due to the snowstorm. So Laura's just here tonight for the update, given your agenda, and then we can have them in when they get the final study.
And they meet tomorrow at 7:00 at WPA?
Yeah.
Great.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. General item number 10 is to execute a contract and authorization agreement for the state library construction grant. Hi, Jess, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Jess, how are you?
Like Jess, I said earlier, I wasn't at the last meetings. I'd like to congratulate you and your staff for your victory at the polls.
Thank you, and thank you guys so much for putting it on the warrant for town meeting.
No problem.
It's great. Good stuff for the town. Keep you busy for a couple of years.
Yep.
That it will. Okay. Floor is all yours, Jess.
What do we need to do? Tell us. Side signing, how about that?
Start signing. So Sean will need to sign all of these documents. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Standard Contract Form is one of those. The Agreement is the next document, and that has 37 different assurances. I talked to Tricia a little bit about it, just to make sure that the town council didn't need to be involved, but she felt that the language was really kind of boilerplate contract And then the proof of authentication of signature, I believe this needs to be notarized as And then there's another form, the contractor authorized signatory listing. And I believe that's it for now.
So these documents we need to have executed in order for us to not just qualify, but get the ball rolling, to get the state to reimburse us after we start building.
There's a pink form as well that should be a part of the packet, and that is actually the authorization for the first request for payment. So as soon as, I think that you could submit this along with the other contracts, as soon as the state reviews them, they'll send us the first 20 percent payment from that approximately $5 million grant.
Great. There's no motion?
One quick question. When do the shovels start the ground? Hit the ground?
Well, we have a year to plan, and basically, the language in the agreement states that we will have a shovel on the ground by November, December of next year.
Because it does say a year from signing the contract.
Correct.
So...
So technically, they want, since the grant was until December 31st, it will need to be by December, really.
Great. Just one question. You have to have your temporary structure and all lined up and...
We do. We need to have the temporary structure in place.
Many overlapping, like when John said, if construction starts, could then you make the move, or no? You have to be moved out?
I think the contractor and the architect are going to want us out completely.
They want the whole building right away.
If there are any issues, delays, the state will sometimes grant extensions. So that's something that, you know, if we get to that point and we're really struggling, we could always, you know, go to the Mass. Board of Library Commissioners and request an extension. But ideally, we would be out by, you know, around December of next year.
And then I think later on, we're putting you and another member on the Public Buildings Commission for this project.
Correct, myself and trustee Karen Canfield.
Yes, I thought I said that. Okay. Yeah, Tony, unless someone else has any comments?
Sure. Move the board to selectmen, vote to accept the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program Agreement, and to authorize Tricia McCasey, Town Administrator, and Nancy Holt, Finance Director, Town Accountant, to assign the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Standard Contract and associated forms pertaining to the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program Grant.
I have a motion, and can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Can I just do her while she's here? What's that, next one?
Are you going to take a break?
The appointment, I was thinking about taking, I mean, that's a no-brainer. I thought I was going to just ask you guys if...
I think he's going to sign. Do her while she's...
Do you want to do a budget?
Well, you really need the budget overview before you get into...
No, no, I'm saying just do her, but she's got to be here for the budget anyways, so...
I was going to ask the board at this point if you wanted to take a five-minute break. It's up to you guys. I don't care, and I know a lot of people have been waiting. It's up to you. This was the point...
Yeah, I'd say, I want to take a quick, the reason is because we got started at 5:30. We were planning on being here for the rest of the night, so just take a quick maybe five-minute break.
Five, 10 minutes, and then we'll stop with, you know, Tricia's overview of the budget process and so forth. Okay? All right? 10 minutes? All right?[1157.58]
I had another sandwich.
You did? That's like four.
No, it's three. It's not four. It's two halves.
That's good. We want you to eat them. Oh, okay.
I was eating for yesterday's story.
Not now, though, Tricia. Marty had four, so.
I didn't have four. I had two halves. He calls that two.
All set, guys?
Yep.
All right. Could I ask that we get back to order at being seven o'clock and kind of move things along? The next agenda item is an overview of the operating and capital budget by town administrator. Thank you, Tricia.
So, thank you. In accordance with the budget schedule, all the binders for the Select Committee Advisory Committee and the Capital Planning Committee are available for the commencement, I guess, of your official review of the FY15 budget cycle, even though the departments have been working on it since early November. So, basically, their hard work is done and yours is beginning. So, this is just a quick 10-minute overview. I did this last year of both the operating and capital budget to give you a frame of reference for what's contained in the 800 or so pages that you have. I'm really happy this was done last week before it started snowing. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And my thanks to Sheila, who spent the last five days compiling it. So, thanks for that. So, before we go into FY15, I just want to recap how we ended FY13 very quickly. And I'm going to go through it fairly rapidly. We had free cash of over $2.8 million, which is a very positive trend. Our general fund receipts and new growth were up over forecast projections and the financial team's projections, almost $852,000. That indicates that we've turned the corner, I think, in building and development, and we've actually had a significant increase in building starts from dormant projects like Walden Woods and Stockbridge Woods, which were approved and permitted years ago, 2003, 2005, and then now they're active. So, that helps our go-forward revenues for our projection. We were also to continue our investment in roads, school security and technology, foreshore protection, water infrastructure, and our vehicle and equipment replacements. And we were also able to maintain our bond rating of AA+. Year-to-date, as you know, we're doing an FY15 budget nine months, 10, eight months in advance of the budget that's actually going to kick in six months from now. So, we have to do some crystal balling, but we also can use FY14 and our experience year-to-date in drafting the budget. As I mentioned, we have building activity that's very positive and local aid and receipts are within the projections. Solar field is commissioned and a reminder that we're the first community in Massachusetts to be 100% clean energy. And as a matter of fact, we're probably 110% clean energy, and we need to get rid of some of that energy, which Al spoke to earlier, because even though we make the revenues, we kind of lose the amount of revenues we can make if we just let that electricity sort of go by the wayside. And Al's had two meetings today with other public agencies about buying our excess capacity. So, that's what he'll be concentrating on. The collaboration between the school and the town department on facilities is moving forward in this budget, in fact, is prominently in the FY15 budget again. Our collaboration there and in other areas with the school department are working very, very well, and I'm very pleased in that regard. We have the feasibility study for the schools, schematic design right now ongoing for public safety. Our library is going to be built in the next fiscal year, so it's not mentioned year-to-date. But as we know, that's approved and will be on the horizon. We completed work on the seawall breach. We have a very, very strong and attractive-looking revetment at the lighthouse that served us very well the past few days. And we've requested $8 million in additional repair work from FEMA because of the storm last year. We've addressed brown water, and we're also moving forward on some other initiatives. The challenges in our budget are that we have new things that develop, and we have to carve appropriations out of existing funds to allocate for things that we never really traditionally made a major appropriation for. Veteran services is one of those. Foreshore protection is one of those. We are economic development. These are all very worthy and very justified requests, but they're new money allocations in a budget, and we have to carve that out when we're doing the entire budget as a whole. Fire personnel services and overtime continues to grow. That's a function of calls, and some other contractual obligations are injured on duty. Our OPEB liability increased by $10 million when we did the last actuarial study in October. Our fixed costs continue to grow, and even though we've been able to do a number of initiatives such as healthcare plan redesign, one of the things I mentioned in the budget message, and this is really compendium of the budget message that you have at the beginning of the budget book, is when we look at wages for employees, we just can't look at base salary anymore and look at personal services as a function. We really need to start focus, and we have been, on total compensation. So, what is it when you hire somebody for $45,000 and you add a family health insurance plan and you add the town's obligation for pension and you add FICA and you add OPEB? And that's really the cost that continued to drive most of our budget every year that are over the levy limit of 2.5%. And as I note here, those kinds of costs escalate right over the 2.5% already. And oftentimes, we're sometimes in the hole before we start in looking at new budgetary requests to do new initiatives. And so, that's what the Balancing Act is, in getting a balanced budget and presenting that to you, both for operating and capital. We have, this particular year, really huge impacts for the amount of time staff and resources are devoted to just the ocean. You know, I've been saying lately, we're all ocean all the time. This year particularly FEMA, community rating system, the MEMA assessments, the MEMA reporting for reimbursements for FEMA, the hazard mitigation grants. And I don't want you to lose sight in that, because that's going to figure very prominently in my budget recommendations for FY15, both in capital and the operating budget, because I think we need to shift focus a little bit and concentrate on it in a few other ways. Our capital needs for our physical plant, as you know, continue to grow. And then, the major initiatives I've had in the four previous budgets that I presented have been focused on technology and facility needs, because we were so woefully behind in those areas. We're always going to need to be looking towards technology and keeping up with the trends and servicing our customers. But we've come a long way in that, and now we need to look more internally about our own administrative systems that actually are inefficient and cost us money. And so, that's what the FY15 budget does along those lines, and we continue building the facilities department. I do want to talk in particular about what I just mentioned a moment ago about Storm Hercules. We've had seven major storms in four and a half years. I know that because I've been here four and a half years. And while people have said, and people know far better than I do, that the towns always had storms and they've always had impacts, that is true. What has changed is the frequency of them. And as the frequency of that continues, even though we know how to address that and we know recovery and we know mitigation, the infrastructure for that is getting taxed at a much more accelerated rate than it would if you just had a '91 storm, a no-name storm. We're having major, serious storms in a very constricted period of time. And even though we have $8 million we expect to get approved in FEMA money, that requires a 25% cash match. So, that's a couple of million the town's going to have to come up with. And I've thought long and hard about the budget in terms of the fact that we have a $70 million budget all in, give or take, with enterprise funds. And we have carved out, as I say here, $2.6 million in revenue for foreshore protection between CPC generous funding, the operating budget of the town, real cash, like free cash, and also borrowing to do that. And the FY15 budget recommends $500,000 for that, again. However, given the enormity of these storms continuing to impact the infrastructure, I've come to the conclusion that we need to look at a different option in terms of a more accelerated pace to begin to address the issues around our seawalls and the revetment. And that's going to be a challenge for the advisory committee, the capital committee, and the Board of Selectmen to look at with the myriad of other public building projects we have coming forward. But I believe I would be remiss if I didn't recommend to the board at this time that this needs now to be in the mix. And not that it wasn't in the mix all along, but given this last storm that we had, coming on the four storms that we had last year, I think it's time that we ask the community how we address this problem. We aren't going to get it there by doing $500,000 a year. We're not going to get there by a million-dollar request, by petition article, a town meeting, that will cut in to the operating budget. And our general fund borrowing is very limited to only about 1.2 a year. We're intentionally smoothing that debt, so we can only take on so much additional debt each year. So, there's hard choices, I think, for the boards and committees and what goes forward to the community. But I added-
So, Tricia, are you maybe suggesting that we look at it in a different approach? Kind of in a phasing approach with raising funds to do this? Or ask various boards, whether it's the advisory or us, to come up with proposals? Or I'm very happy to hear you're saying that, because I think that's an issue that we need to address long-term. And I'm not saying you haven't. It's just that I think you're right. Whether we say 500 or a million, it's going to be a bigger problem that we need to address.
The problem is, we were not putting regular money into any of our infrastructure. That's nobody in this room's fault or whatever. So, we have water issues. We have sewer issues. We have foreshore protection issues. $2.6 million in four or five years is a lot of money. $8 million with a cash match of 1.6 is a lot of money. But as you know, the FEMA money only does sections of already damaged wall. And we have from our inventory, we know that to look at all these and start to do serious work is a much higher number. What I'm saying is, it can't be satisfied by the operating budget, and it can't be satisfied by our annual capital plan, where we borrow about 1.2 million to replace trucks, to do school technology. So, we need to look at a different paradigm for addressing this issue. And I say that because I think we need to be aware of it, but I don't think we own that responsibility. We clearly own the responsibility for public seawalls. How they're treated in private areas is another matter. But if something happens to those seawalls, then we need to be part of the process to solve that. It's a state and federal issue as well. We didn't build those seawalls. They were all built, as we know, in the 1920s by the WPA, whatever. But this board and these town officials here now bear the responsibility of the impacts. And so, I just, I think we just need to be open to saying, how do we step up to this challenge when we have all these other, you know, important needs as well? And that's really for the community to decide. But instead of us wrestling with how much to throw at it every year, I think we need to ask the community, you know, present it to them and see what they're willing to pay for. And then, go from there. Because what we're doing has been tremendous, but it's not enough. And, you know, I've really come to that realization after the last winter we had and then this storm yet again, and it's only the beginning of January. So, it's a concern I have, and I have to share it with you. Moving on, there's some things that I concentrated on the FY15 budget. The budget is balanced without using free cash in accordance with our policies. We have revised the financial team, along with the Financial Forecast Committee, increased our local receipt projections by half a million dollars. So, that helped this budget tremendously as far as budget development for both the town and school. Local aid, which has really been a roller coaster as far as us being able to know what we're going to get, is actually level-funded this year. This is the first time in several years we haven't been carrying a cut in the projections. And as of this date, our union contracts are in pretty good shape. And you can see the town patent there, which is below our 2.5% levy limit. So, that keeps it affordable, and that's something that we've been able to do with the cooperation of all our employees, which I'm very happy to say. And as you can see, as we look at the available revenue, we have to recommend the budget each year, every 1% cooler on the town side is $100,000 in FY14 right now. And it's no surprise that, as I mentioned earlier, fixed costs account for most of the increases. This next page gives you a comparison of FY14, what we've appropriated and what I'm recommending, and shows you the percentage variance. You're all very familiar with the discussions about the increases in pension. Health insurance, because of plan design, has remained level-funded. FICA is employee payroll tax, which is just a function of our total employee census. OPEB, I already mentioned, that's 2% of the retirement assessment goes into our OPEB account. The work is comped steady. Unemployment's up a little bit based on current history. Our liability insurance is level-funded. General liability insurance was $495,000 in FY11. So, we've been able to go out to bid and get much more affordable insurance and also increase our lines of coverage by going through MYA. As you can see, nominal change in debt service. And this year, another sort of roller coaster amount is South Shore Regional Voke. We anticipate only three students for FY15. We've had as many as 11, 12, 13, and for an assessment. So, that's a positive move there. So, along with just trying to fund the budget, we also tried to do something new. As you know, all the department heads do goals and objectives, and they're measured on their performance in achieving those each year. And as I mentioned earlier, we want to continue moving forward with technology and making improvements in planning. And the specific areas in planning is, I talked to you about the positive trend in building development. The building department needs additional assistance to deal with all that work. We have existing projects, and we have anticipated projects with the development of the Gulston property and potentially Green Bush. That is not enough for our building inspector right now, and he recognized that. All the departments in the budget this year have done benchmarking. So, when you review everybody's departmental budget, you'll be able to see how we compare to staffing and budget and services with comparable communities around us. And this is one of the things in terms of the building department that you'll see the benchmarking data really supports. It expands collaborations with the school department. We will sunset the DIA program most likely, and we'll have a school resource officer in the school- most likely, and we'll have a school resource officer in the school department in the fall. And that's something that Chief Stewart and Superintendent McCarthy have worked very closely on, and we are doing collaboratively. The facilities department continues to grow. We hired the facilities director, the school hired the assistant facilities director. This budget recommends to add an additional person who is essentially a handyman carpenter. We are paying Kevin $40 an hour to crawl under places and get bids. And he really needs to manage not only the facilities, but oversee and coordinate with the Public Building Commission, the library, the public safety building. He's a member of the school building committee. So we need some more bandwidth there and able to address these things. And then finally, a focus on economic development. The request from the Economic Development Commission was $97,000. Again, revenue that we weren't allocating to a budget two, three years ago. That budget has been funded at $97,500 in a different way than the, in some different ways than the EDC has asked for. But it does make major inroads and initiatives into the MAP study that you're going to, you just heard about earlier, being able to actually have those recommendations implemented. And that was the main focus and request of the EDC when I met with the chair, that they have some funds to be able to implement the recommendations that come out of this study. And the capital plan also takes that a step further by, it recommends purchase of a trolley to run service between Green Bush and the harbor, to get people off the boats, to Widows Walk and the train, and vice versa. And we could talk more about that later in the capital plan, but that's another initiative in this budget. We have 35 departments, so that, those 35 departments all need to be balanced in terms of your goals, departmental goals, and what we have as available resources. And so it's really a matter of balancing the priorities. But it does continue some of the things we've had still in the override from 2010. There's $400,000 in there in the operating budget, again, for foreshore protection and for roads. And as I mentioned earlier, the total recommendation for foreshore alone is $500,000 in FY15, which the petitioners last year articulated at town meeting, I think, that, you know, we needed at least $500,000 a year. It provides for the contract settlements. We have two settled contracts. I anticipate we'll have three soon. So the budget numbers that you're going to see will vary when you look at the departmental requests versus my recommendation, because we were able to roll in the contractual increases in the personal services line item based on the town patent that you saw in the earlier slide. And as I mentioned, it recommends staffing positions for building, coastal administration, and facilities. We have 26 warrant articles, and that's down from 40 last year. So hopefully, it will be a one-night town meeting. And then I just want to talk a little bit about the capital plan.
Tricia, can I just answer?
Yep.
Just a quick question about the foreshore.
Yeah.
The thing I'm a little concerned about is, you know, I know 500,000 is a lot of money. But if we've got, if we're going to look at getting $8 million from FEMA, we have to be able to match that. How, how do we come up with matching funds at 25% if we don't have the funds available?
Well, some of the work is going to be reimbursable and others, we're going to have to front the money. So we don't, so, and there's also some additional funds in capital stabilization. And the work can't all be, we can't do $8 million at once. So we'll fund it over several town meetings.
Okay.
But one of the things we have to figure out is if the town's going to be expected to front the entire 100% and then get reimbursed. I've spoken with Kevin about this, and he said some will be upfront cash and some will be reimbursable. But we can't do, it's just like the water, Marty.
Yeah.
We can't do 22 million in one year.
I understand that.
We're not going to be able to do 8 million of work, so it's going to be over several years.
And Tricia, what's the, the staffing for coastal administration?
The coastal administration, and it's detailed in the budget message, is, it proposes a full-time position for a coastal resources officer. 22% of that position will be grant-funded because FEMA will actually pay us to have someone administer the flood, flood, the hazard mitigation, elevating the houses. We already know we have 17 houses this year that need to be elevated. Laura can't manage that anymore. She's been doing a fabulous job the last few years. The community rating system, we are trying to get an even higher rating the next time around. This takes tremendous amount of time for Patrick, even though he has a tremendous CRS committee working with him. The conservation issues and enforcement offices, issues are increasing, and as building increases, so does conservation commission work. So the plan would be to have that person do the flood mitigation grants, the community rating system, to work on, helping administer all this foreshore protection work, and to deal with other things we're dealing with, like the FEMA appeals. Now, if you're following all the FEMA stuff, there's going to be a vote this week in Congress to delay the Bigget Water Act up to four years. That's only pushing it down the road four more years. Or if it doesn't pass, it's going to be here for us for the long term. What's been happening is that the building department, the conservation commission office, the planning office, and myself have devoted ignorant amounts of time where we have to drop everything to do this. And it's not conducive to us getting to do the other things we have to do as a normal job. This was something the board recognized in one of the retreats, I think, three years ago. And I think the time has really come that we need to devote someone to this. It's my recommendation. The money that's available in the budget, I can recommend in areas that I think the town needs it. And so that's, that's the area that I really think, step, we can't continue to do this piecemeal. And the FEMA stuff was just the last straw in terms of having to immerse yourself in something that's highly technical. And I'm going to talk later in my report about the next step in the FEMA appeal process and how that goes. So as I said, some of it's grant-funded, so that will help offset the cost. I talked about town meeting, and just quickly in closing about the capital plan, we had over, almost $71 million in FY15 capital requests. And two, just under $3 million is recommended from the general fund, 1.25 of general fund borrowing, which is in keeping with our policies, and a million of free cash. That still leaves us about $535,000 in free cash, which we need to always keep as a reserve. I don't ever go below 500,000 in free cash because we still have the rest of FY14 to get through. And then we don't know what's going to happen through FY15. And that's just another reserve fund that the town has in case anything should happen. We are going to need to transfer some funds at the special in April to pay for the storm mitigation for Storm Hercules. Police overtime for that period alone was $8,000. And as you know, when you see contractors clearing all those roadways, there's a cost involved in that. And then, again, there's important initiatives in, for the schools. The schools, as I mentioned earlier, are starting to embark on a second phase, second-tier phase of school technology over the next several years, so begins to fund that. And relocation of the early childhood center, which is costly. We have some physical plant needs that Kevin has been able to discover. Now that we have eyes and ears on facilities, the capital requests have increased because Kevin has discovered these things in our physical plant that we need to add to. And one of them that needs to be done right away is we have a huge drainage issue problem in the fire department headquarters. And that's going to be very costly to fix. And that's something that Kevin, working with the chief, was able to under, undiscover. So that's, that's that. And then for FY16, we'll continue to get the pension increase of 8%. Foreshore protection, OPEB will continue to be with us long after we're all sitting here. We have the public facilities with the Gates Middle School project going forth and the school feasibility. And then we're already sitting on $32 million in requests for FY16 on our five-year rolling capital plan. So this is, this is a good budget, though. It's, I think, a budget I'm very proud of because it lets us do some things, because we finally have some funds that I can allocate to them. I don't think it's over the top in terms of what it's requesting. The benchmarking will show our staff is lean. But I think, you know, given the fact that we have an opportunity to do some things that have been sitting there for a while, this budget incorporates that. So I just wanted to give you an overview. You have 800 pages to read at night before you fall asleep. And it's all detailed much more in the budget message for both capital and the operating budget. And I also just want to thank Nancy Holt, our new finance director, who's still coming to work after doing this budget. She's a very quick learner and turns things around quickly. So I really want to thank her. And, you know, this past year, we've had lots of new staff, lots of turnover, and it's, the budget process has been new for them as well. But they've all risen to the occasion. And the first budget you'll see is Jesse, who hasn't done that for you before. And I'm sure you'll be very, very impressed. So thank you for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Not seeing any, I'd just like to make a comment. Thank you very much for all your hard work, which you do all the time. In these past months, there's no exception, that's for sure, to make all these deadlines, to prepare all this information for us. I would go by and talk to you long after business hours, and you are up to your eyeballs in paperwork. And, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate everything you've done. And Nancy, I thank you for the time.
Thanks.
Moving on to our budgets. We'll start with number 610, the library. Jesse, just give us one second. I guess you have, Tricia, number 610. In the past, Tricia has asked, you have a mission statement right at the beginning, if you didn't, if you wouldn't mind just reading that to us. I have a copy of it here, if you don't have it before we start.
Sure. So our mission is to provide a free, accessible library where acquisitions, programs, and services are patron-driven, and to implement service delivery practices to ensure that every patron interaction is positive and efficient.
Thank you. Moving on to the budget. Open it up to the board. If you have any questions, we're not, as in the past, we're probably not going to vault them, correct. Tricia?
I'm just, right.
Hear them and make adjustments later on if need be. I'll just, I mean-
Looks as though that, I was going to say, looks as though that some of the facilities, there were some cuts by the administrator, I presume, because we're going to be looking at a new facility very shortly. And so the need to be able to do some of these things, we can negate for the coming fiscal year.
I believe that was the reason for the energy and gas cuts, yes.
And there have been some increases in personal services based upon your request and what the town administrator recommended.
And that's part of the contract negotiations.
And that's, that's what I noticed, just the difference.
Can you go into the personnel side a little bit?
Certainly. Well, the contracts are being renegotiated. Right now, we have two unions at the library, AAMS and Tosca. I believe they're both getting fairly close to coming to an agreement on a contract. And so Tricia has actually given me the final number. I base my numbers on the current rates that I have with the, the contract that's actually expired.
Gotcha.
Are there any new personnel?
Well, we have a new teen librarian, but that's not necessarily a new position. It's just that we filled a position that was vacant for a few months.
So in your 2015 budget, it's the same personnel as for-
Correct. Yes. Same number of staff.
Even with, so what year would that go into? Do you need more people when the, when the library expands?
We don't believe so. You know, there were two new positions added, and I believe the 2007 override. And I believe that we have enough staff currently. We're going to have to reshuffle. We're going to have to rethink the way we do operations. But I believe we have enough staff to, to manage the library.
Right. Just strive to do that. Strive to do that. Because I don't think people are going to be happy to hear, we got a new building and then they're going to say-
Absolutely. That's what we're working towards. Absolutely.
Strive to do that, best you can.
I thought we had asked that question when you were, you know, selling us on the project. When you go to a temporary facility, and, you know, I mean, there's going to be so many moving pieces, it's, it's going to be difficult. If we're at 30,000 square feet now and we go to a 10,000 square foot temporary facility, do you still, how are you going to manage all, you know, people are expecting their 32 hours or 20 hours, whatever they have? How do you, any ideas on what you might do on something like that?
Well, even though our current facility is 26,000 square feet, we really work on about 10,000 to 13,000 of those square feet. We have a few staff that currently reside in the downstairs lower, lower level. But most of that space is not used by the library. There's the community room space, but then most of it is really not utilized. So I, I mean, a lot is going to be dependent on what facility we find that we can relocate to. But I feel like if we were able to find a facility that was a 10,000 square foot facility, we would be able to manage with the staff that we have now.
All right. When you say find, though, you're saying, basically, we're going to have to probably rent something along that lines.
Absolutely. And that's budgeted into the, into the grant.
Trish, is the major difference in the two personal services, the, the expected rate increase from the contracts?
In personal services, yes.
Between yours and-
Yes.
And the departments?
Yeah. That's just the COLA and step increases.
Right.
For 19, Jesse?
Yes.
Yeah, 19.
So you don't have that in your, because the town administrator's budget is, is higher in most of the department budgets, because you've incorporated that.
I say rent, I mean, I'm not talking about finding another building in town, something that we're going to have to bring in. That's what I mean by structure.
Right. We're exploring a lot of different options right now. Modular units is one possibility. We're exploring other potential places that we could move to. There really isn't a lot available in town. The, and BLC would allow us to move outside of the town limits. But for obvious reasons, we don't want to move very far outside of town limits. So, you know, that's another thing that we're exploring.
You got some room, don't you, Buck? Along those lines, do we, the school that has modules, are those still being used? And it just, all right.
Yeah. I was wondering, the reason why I say it, since we talked about Vermont earlier, I remember a store had burnt down up in Vermont. What they ended up bringing in was literally a bubble for like a year or two before they rebuilt. It was basically a huge igloo. Ugly as sin, but at least it served its purpose. And I don't know whether or not there's something along that lines, given the size that you're looking for.
I think, I think the modulars come in all different shapes and saucers, and something like what you're talking about is an option. The issues that we have when we're talking about relocation are, the state requires that the, whatever facility we move into be ADA accessible. And also, we have, it does not, the whole facility doesn't necessarily have to meet this requirement, but some part of the facility has to be able to handle 150 pounds per square foot, which is what it requires to hold the weight of books.
Books.
And most typical office spaces are about 60 to 80 pounds per square foot. I've talked to some modular companies. Obviously, this will all have to go out to bid, but just to sort of get my own head around it, I've talked to some companies who have said that they actually build temporary foundations. So, you know, that's a possibility. The, the town does own some of the land around the library. So even remaining on the grounds might be possible. And we have $180,000 budgeted for the actual location.
Yeah, you're going to need parking, though. See, then they're going to be using the construction site with parking. The reason why I was saying it was like, like Central Park, if you could put something like on a gigantic parking lot with a huge bubble, you wouldn't have to worry about the pounds because you wouldn't need a foundation. You could heat it. It's, like I said, it's going to be ugly as sin, but at least it could serve its purpose if it's something local to Central.
Right. And presumably, we could run electricity from the current library to-
And if it's on flush with the ground, then you wouldn't have to worry about ADA compliance other than doorways getting in and out. other than doorways getting in and out.
But I think you're probably thinking operationally, too. I mean, maybe, maybe you come up with a delivery system for books that's cheaper than renting a facility, you know, that you can hand-deliver books, or, you know, who knows what options are. I'm sure you're tossing it all around to figure out what the best way to do it is.
I see, be like, was it Amazon who's going to be doing these calls? Hovercraft is going to drop the book like a stork?
We have said that, you know, if we just want to get a bunch of bookmobiles, and we'll just drive around for a year and a half or so.
And sell ice cream along the way, there you go. All right, thanks.
And just in total, we usually just read off the numbers. So in 2014, the library budget was nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, and this year, the town administrator's number is nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. The department, of course, is nine hundred and fifty-three, and I think the difference there is just utilities and repairs and stuff that won't happen because of the new building.
There's been a slight reduction in our materials line, and we understand and expect that that's going to happen when we're relocating. We're not going to be purchasing as many new items, and we'll probably be trying to invest more in electronic resources and things of that nature.
Don't you have to buy a certain amount?
We do have to buy a certain amount, and, but this, we're still going to be in compliance with this amount.
So there's several moving pieces in this budget, because in FY15, they will be vacating the space and will not be in the same square footage they are now, and it's likely there'll be reduced services and hours. But even despite that, we still have to fund the budget as it is now. We'll request a waiver from the Library Commission, but that is only as much as ten percent. What's included in your budget is all the additional costs the town is responsible for, they're not funded under the grant. And since we believe that that needs a funding source, we've allocated additional funds into the capital outlay of the budget. There's thirteen thousand dollars and change in that, because if the moving costs, if the rental costs are not within the grant budget, if the non-eligible costs aren't covered by the delta of the seven million, we need to have a provision for that. So we've put seed money in that budget, but I do not expect that the budget you see here will be fully expended in FY15 unless, to Jesse's point, we were able to find ten thousand square feet and keep everybody there and do that. And so this is a budget, and for more, you too, that we might need to approve and then tweak again at the fall town meeting, once we know, you know, where you're physically going to be to move line items or whatever, and other places where we need to put money.
Questions, comments? Tony read off the numbers?
Challenging year for you guys.
Yep, it's going to be.
It'll be good.
Going to earn it. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, come on down, you're next.
One forty-one, assessors. All along, Marty.
Hi. All right. Pretty simple stuff.
Good evening.
Hi, Steve, how are you?
What, how are you?
Thanks for being patient. If you wouldn't mind reading off the mission statement?
The mission of the assessor's office is to ensure a process of fair and equitable assessments in accordance with Massachusetts general law and Department of Revenue guidelines, directives, and policies.
Thank you. Last year's appropriation was eighty-six. This year, the town administrator has recommended in two sixty-four and change. Salaries, something that's up. Sign them out, not a whole lot.
Well, it's, it's the COLA and stuff.
Technical services.
Technical services.
Technical services.
Is that a typo?
No.
Seventy thousand dollars?
It's your reval.
Yeah, it's for the revaluation, and historically, we've funded that through an article, but I, we're going to do it through the budget this time, I guess.
Just, you don't need to, I mean, we have to do it every three years. We do a separate warrant article for it, we can just roll it into his budget and fund it that way, under the omnibus budget, and save an article.
Just on that note, I see in your goals and objectives, implement annual process. So after 2015, are you looking to try to do this annually, then, Steve? Is that...
What's that?
Identify, this was under your objectives, implement annual process, April 2015. So I wasn't sure what exactly you meant by that. In other words, is that for evaluating going forward, or...
On the first goal?
On your first...
Well, that's just, that's just a data quality study that we'll do, just to be certain that the existing data is accurate, and if we find any errors or any kind of omissions, we can update things. It's not part of a reevaluation process, it's just part of an ongoing thing that we'll do anyways.
Okay. I was just looking at some of your goals, I was kind of intrigued by them, that's all. I know we've jumped right to your budget, but I thought, you know, you're looking to do some delineation in the neighborhoods?
Right.
Based on zoning and try to incorporate into the GIS system ultimately, so that we go online, we can take a look at a parcel and property in conjunction with zoning or building, and also with assessment?
We have nine, we have nine assessment districts that have been in existence, maybe even before 2006, but I recall 2006 being the year, when we got our new software. And there have been some changes to neighborhoods. I guess the most recent thing you could talk about would be sewerage down to Hadley Road and parts of mine. That may change, may change some sales activity or numbers, we don't know until we look at it, so we may tweak some lines. The geographical lines right now, but sometimes, as we look at sales, we realize that sometimes we have to change the lines, not just necessarily down the street, but across the street or something, or into another neighborhood, and that's what that, that's all about.
Steve, if you want to take one second and just explain what the seventy thousand dollars is for? Like, what actually, I mean, I've heard you talk about it, but I think anyone watching may be interested in...
Well, Department of Revenue, every third year requires the town to do a revaluation, a recertification update of all values. And the vendor that we choose will have to come up with all new land values, new building values. It's a, it's a labor-intensive process, involves an analysis that goes on for weeks and weeks and weeks. Last time, we did what we call a full field review, which that was, it was more of a field process. This will be more analysis, but nevertheless, it still takes quite a long time. And the DOR, again, gives us a number of studies that we have to produce and provide for them and offer them to certify us.
So it's not a field, you're not doing the field one this time?
Not a full field review, we don't have to this time.
How often do you have to do that?
Well, they anticipate, they suggest every third revaluation, and what that means is that you're out at every property, looking at every home. It's not, it's not a physical inspection of the interior, it's simply looking at the exterior and making sure that the data that exists is accurate. And then making small adjustments based on condition and quality and style and all of those kind of things.
So we hire a consultant, and they are the ones that come in and crunch all the data and give it to the DOR?
Correct.
I got a question for you, Steve. With a vacant lot, or a house might have been on at one time, does that get reassessed for the value of just a vacant lot?
Yes.
Unless the house doesn't get built again?
Correct. And generally, if it's a buildable parcel, we'll say it's a buildable lot, unless something changes with zoning or something. But, yeah, it'd be a vacant parcel with a buildable value.
Or a non-buildable value, if it's a non-buildable lot.
Exactly, exactly, if something changes.
But if it was non-conforming, so a buildable lot's a buildable lot.
The reason why I'm thinking of is, I'm thinking about a lawsuit that was, that town's involved in, and it just kind of struck me of thinking, okay, if the lot's non-conforming, doesn't get rebuilt, it's abandoned for a number of years, and the person doesn't pay tax on it, but they pay it only at a reduced rate, I would assume, because they're not building, paying it on.
Usually, I mean, you know, it usually works the other way. We have parcels that we have what we call one thirty-two class code, which is unbuildable. And I won't say the subdivision's there today, but there are changes that have happened, so, you know, never say never. It could go either way.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just going to comment on, you know, everybody does their own different benchmarks, you know, and they look at it different ways. Yours was interesting in terms of number of parcels, number of man-hours that we have in the department, and compare that to the surrounding communities. And, you know, we're right in line or below what our surrounding communities, it's tough to find one that has, you know, kind of in a unique slot with nine thousand plus...
I didn't include some other criteria that we look at as assessors. We don't have a large commercial, commercial base, as we know, but, for example, the town of Rockland, I think, has five different land values, town-wide, from, say, one twenty to one sixty. We have over thirty land value categories because of the water. So we have, you know, west end has certain land values, and you get towards the water, land values differ, you have water view, we have water orientation, we have direct waterfront, we have all those kind of things.
You said we have thirty different values?
Thirty, that's a lot. We have to, we have to.
Right, no, that's, that's...
So within neighborhoods, within a neighborhood, for example, you could, in a neighborhood on the cliff, for example, we could have eight different land values in one neighborhood. You have waterfront, water view, this is a number, this is a number of different categories.
Remember, you gave us that thing...
Oh, actually, we've had a conversation about that.
Well, you gave us a piece of paper last time that listed all of...
Oh, that one, but I think you and I had a conversation about the land values one time, and I showed you the different categories.
You guys do a good job.
Thank you. The totality of numbers, yeah, are, last year was one eighty-six, nine-seven-one, and this year's two sixty-four, which is a little misleading because of the seventy thousand dollar revaluation number in there.
Exactly.
And it does obviously make sense to put it in there, it is. It's going to happen every three years, so...
It has to, we don't, we don't have any, any candy choice.
Tricia, could you accrue for it, to flatten it out?
The reval? Yeah, you could appropriate thirty thou...
Each year?
I did that in another town, we just, you know, did a special article twenty-five, because a special article's forever, so you just appropriate twenty-five thousand each year.
But could it be in the budget?
Um, no, I don't, no, it would, he should have to close it out.
It would clean out every year, yeah.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And this is going to be funded mostly with overlay reserve, so only a small portion of the town's revenues, because it's really arguable whether the town should be...
Overlay reserve, what's that?
The overlay surplus.
Surplus. We raised, let's say, two hundred thousand, two fifty, probably.
Gotcha. So we're, this isn't funded through...
Ten thousand of it, Nancy? Ten thousand of it's funded on the town revenue side, but the rest, our financial policy has called for a five-year rolling average to release from the overlay reserve, and this makes sense because it's funding for the reval.
And we're fortunate, we don't have any big cases that we foresee in the near future, you know.
We've never done that before, right? Not, funded it from the overlay surplus?
No, we haven't, we haven't. I mean, there's an argument to be made that this is really a fixed cost as opposed to a town-side responsibility, it's a law, we have to do it every three years, so that's why we finally decided to roll it into the budget.
And that's been consistent, this is the third, third time it's been that kind of, it hasn't changed that much as far as increasing.
A dollar amount?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was seventy...
It was seventy-two last and seventy...
Seventy-five, I think we did.
Yeah, it's been about the same.
What, um, will you be able to fund it every three years from that, do you think? Or is this a one-time?
It depends on what the five-year rolling average is. As Steve just said, we haven't, it's, the overlay reserve surplus is what's left after all the abatements and exemptions for people who seek abatements or go to the appellate tax board are. So the reason you do the five-year rolling average is because it recognizes you have aberrations in years where you're going to have higher or lower. The, we have the money now because we haven't done a reval in three years, so it's all settled. FY16, you're going to have a higher reserve because more people get a new tax bill based on the reval and apply for more abatements and exemptions.
It just perks people's interest, once they know a revaluation is occurring, or anything else that may happen with the market, so, and, and we haven't had any big appellate tax board cases lately, but one thing that does concern me is that the Catholic Church filed last year again, and they appealed their denial once again.
That's still on appeal, right?
No, no, we, we had the case and we were successful, but in thirteen, the twelve, they didn't, didn't file, they came back and filed last year. So that's up in appellate tax, but we haven't had a hearing date assigned or anything, but we're not certain what their, what their motive is or their approach is. I mean, it was determined they were not exempt, but yet they, they chose to file again, after, after not filing for one year. That's going to be interesting. Yeah, I mean, we expect we'll be successful again, but if we're not, then there's forty or fifty thousand dollars we're looking at out of the overlay.
Thank you.
We just hope they'll do it again in another, like, three years, when we have to have another seventy thousand dollars, it's the archdiocese to pay for. All right, thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. One sixty-one, town clerk.
Kathy, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Might I read your mission statement?
Mission statement, okay. The mission of the Office of the Town Clerk is to serve as the official record keeper and archivist of town records and statistics, good bless you, to coordinate and oversee elections and voter registration in compliance with Massachusetts and local law, and to assure sound documentation and access to local government for the general public and town government, to accurately establish, maintain, and certify all vital statistics of the town, and to collect and administer licenses, registrations, and permits required by Mass. general law and town bylaws, to provide courteous, competent, and efficient service to the community in an effort to establish public confidence and respect for government.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looks like a quarter, just under thirty thousand on the increase. Some part-time salaries is up, about ten thousand?
The support services are...
Up a lot. Right, okay. Kathy, what is that, the support services, is it software?
No, support services mostly having, relating to town meetings and elections. In other words, you've got ballot programming, all the election costs, food, custodial, you've got your sound systems for a town meeting, and you've multiplied that times however many town meetings I budget in a year. I've got a couple of specials in the annual budgeted in there, and the programming of the ballots. So you multiply that times, we have the state primary in the fall, the state election in the fall, and the annual of two thousand and fifteen, you've got three elections and I think it's three town meetings budgeted in there.
There's an extra election in there, too, which is driving the...
Yes, that's the other thing, yes.
Middle school override.
Oh, that's right.
So we have, that's what's, that's, what is it, six thousand, I think that's all of it.
It's eighty-four hundred dollars more.
Eighty-four hundred for an extra election.
For, okay, so that's the difference.
That's, that's the difference.
No, no, but it was eighteen...
It's a thirty-two.
So eighteen only had two elections, right? In two thousand and fourteen?
I'm sorry, in two thousand and next year?
Two thousand and fourteen, we budgeted eighteen thousand. So that must have been two elections?
We had...
Two town meetings, an annual and a special.
And two, yes, but we also, yes, and then we went to special elections, then we had those two special elections, yes.
Which were partially, well...
Which, right, but it was fifty-six hundred dollars, I think we got back from the government.
That goes in the general fund.
Right, right.
Well, I guess we're just, you know, it's jumping from twenty to eighteen to thirty-two.
Where are you looking? I'm looking at...
Just under the... Thirteen to fourteen.
Oh, here we are. It's under support services, is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, in two thousand and fourteen, yes, we had, gosh, how many elections did we have? We had so many, I lost count. It's, I think it's the extra special election that's bringing that up, because you figure programming, programming of ballots is two thousand dollars, printing the ballots is roughly two thousand, give or take a hundred or two hundred dollars. So that's...
Four thousand right there.
Yeah, per election alone, and then you figure another...
The labor.
That, and then, well, that, that's personnel services, that's, that's different, yeah, that's, that's something different, but then you have your police detail, your custodial fees, and the food to feed the election workers. So those costs, I think off the top of my head, they run, it's basically eighty-four to nine thousand dollars an election for, if you, if you're adding in, well, no, that adds in personal services, too, so let's get that. But, yeah, so it's, it's a lot, it's four thousand dollars just for the ballots, programming and printing.
So the thirty-two here is four elections, is that what you have for fifteen? If it's eight thousand dollars each?
I have for, no, don't, because that's eight thousand includes personnel. So you have a fall special town meeting next year, you have a state primary in November fourth, you have a state election, you have the May town election in two thousand and fifteen, and an annual town meeting in two thousand and fifteen, and I've also the special... and an annual town meeting in two thousand and fifteen, and I've also the special election for the schools, if that happens, that's been figured in.
Fall of two thousand and fifteen.
That'll be the next year.
The June.
All right, oh.
Well, the election will be after the fiscal year.
Right, we're hoping the town meeting will be fourteen, but the election's probably gonna be in FY fifteen.
Couldn't you do it in May?
The school isn't even getting the recommendation from MSBA until May, and then they need time to educate the folks about the ballot question, and we have to have a town meeting.
So, is it possible that we could, well, I was gonna say, a fall election?
So Kathy's original request was twenty-five, six for all the costs she mentioned, conversion data, election machine maintenance, custodial meals, programming the machines, um, and then we just, I added the additional amount to thirty-two thousand for the extra election.
In the previous request, the, also, that's, Tricia just reminded me, it costs about two thousand dollars a year to maintain the older machines that we have, we have a service contract with a company out in Illinois, ESNS, and they come out, um, I believe it's usually in October, and it's about nineteen hundred dollars right now to service those machines, and they test them and what have you, so.
See, because two, two thousand and thirteen was actually more than...
Just one thing I, I know with our, um, grand plan or strategic plan, obviously, looking for space is paramount for you to make sure that the clerk's office has adequate...
Oh, absolutely.
Storage space, 'cause that's one of the biggest obstacles that you have, right?
Vault space for the archives and also storage space for the election equipment, 'cause that has to be locked, so, and that, right now, is being kept in the shed, um, the machines are being kept in the shed down in the basement, and the, the booths and the bins are in the garage, so, yeah, that's, that's paramount, too. Safe, you know, climate-controlled storage for the archive records is important.
Questions or comments?
No, it looks like you're, did you go through the FY fourteen appropriation? Don't you go through that?
No, I didn't, you wanna do it?
So the, uh, number for fiscal year fourteen, which ends June thirtieth, for this, this fiscal year that we're currently in, was a hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, and the amount that's being recommended by town administrator, which I assume, Kathy, you're in agreement with, is for a hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Good.
Okay.
Kathy, thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Two forty-one inspections. Hi, Neil.
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Very well, thank you.
Good.
Great.
Please.
Uh, mission statement of the inspections department, uh, the mission of the Cituate inspections department is to ensure the public safety, health, and welfare as it relates to buildings and structures by conscientious enforcement of the state building code, gas and plumbing code, electrical code, weights and measures regulations, state disabilities regulations, and FEMA flood plan regulations. In addition, the inspections department is charged with enforcing the town of Cituate zoning bylaw and applicable general bylaws.
Thank you. Budget looks to be up about seventy, seven thousand dollars, told, two twenty-nine to three oh-one, town administrator's recommending, and...
That has how many new positions?
Yes.
Two?
Well...
One and a half?
One, one and a half, yeah.
Yeah, it, well, it's really, it's one new, uh, local building inspector, and then, um, a, a ten-hour clerk, uh, we're just overwhelmed with paperwork and, um...
Yes, you have.
Yes, and, uh, and, and it's not just FEMA, you know, FEMA alone, uh, has been kinda overwhelmed us, but if I could just, a little point of interest, uh, at a development review team meeting today, I went down and I added up all of the, um, projects that are either under construction or will most likely be ready for permitting in the spring, and I came up with a figure of around a hundred and seventy. That does not include Toll Brothers' proposal for ninety-seven units, so, in the near future, we could have, you know, three hundred, uh, new units in this town, which is just, uh, I mean, it's just accumulated, you know, over the years, you know, starting with the recession, and a lot of projects were permitted, and, uh, several chapter forty-B projects, which are quite large, and they're just, you know, with the improving economy, they're, 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 you know, they're, they're underway, you know.
Much like what Tricia said just a while ago.
She made the case anyways, I don't, I don't have to add much.
So, explain the seventy thousand, seventy-two thousand dollar increase, what, what are those, that's a full-time position?
Full-time, uh, well, I think, um, basically, when, when we put, uh, when we do our budget, we put in what we did last year, 'cause we know, you know, know what the COLA's going to be, um, so the seventy thousand would, you know, COLA would include a ten-hour part-time clerk, would include a thirty-five-hour local building inspector.
So that's, uh, the local buildings inspector's at forty-one thousand per annum, and the extra clerk at ten hours a week is nine thousand, which I thought I cut, but...
And then, the twenty-two is COLA?
Yeah, steps and, and whatever.
That seems high.
Wait, wait a minute.
The local's fifty-seven, put in fifty-seven, I think, for the local.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected, I was reading the wrong line on...
So it's in there at fifty-six?
Fifty-six, yeah, fifty-seven and change.
Fifty-six, six oh-three, Tony, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I should've seen.
I was reading, um, another salary.
Well, one thing I have to say, Neil, is when I'm looking at the inspections and the benchmarks to the surrounding communities, we're getting a lot of bang for the proverbial buck, I mean, there's only one other community that does more inspections, and that's Hingham, actually Marshfield and Hingham, um, your permits, for permits was eight hundred and thirty-three with a budget of about almost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, I was, I was amazed, um, by comparison to all surrounding communities, that's well done, well below, you know, the budget for Hingham is over seven, almost seven hundred thousand dollars, and they only have a hundred thou, they only have like about a hundred more permits.
Just to clarify that, they, they actually have, uh, combined with planning, so some of that is, is planning, but I would like to point out, of, of all the communities, Cituate, uh, Marshfield may be close, but Cituate has the most work on the, on the coast, we absolutely do.
Especially after storms, going back in to making sure the work's done, this is...
And Hull, Hull has a lot of that also, but they both have two full-time building inspectors and have had that for quite some time.
I think that's what people need to know, it's not like somebody's saying, "I'm building a new house," or "I'm just gonna renovate," and you go out and do inspections, it's also the inspections after storms, you gotta go back in to make sure that the electrical's there, that everything's fine, you know, whether it's piping, plumbing, electrical, you know, structural, as you know, so, so people understand there's a lot of work.
So, so this inspector will just go out and do the inspections, which you do now, and do you hire somebody to do that?
We, we actually, uh, we have a myriad of duties that need to be done, you know, plan review, uh, building inspections, uh, zoning enforcement, zoning investigation, court appearances, I, I mean, these things we just have not had time to do, um, where, where, you know, primarily public safety, and that's what we concentrate on, and, you know, we, we need to, I mean, I take our zoning enforcement seriously, and, and, you know, there's, we have quite a backlog, and, and, and it just doesn't get better as time goes on, I've mentioned in the past in my, um, report that, the other thing, keep in mind, the, the regulations, uh, over the past ten years have just multiplied and multiplied, and, you know, we're, 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 with the energy conservation, we're, we're a stretch code community, uh, we're in the hundred-ten mile power wind zones, just so much more paperwork, and so much more to review, and so much to look at when you go out on the jobs, and, um, you know, the, the, the position has really, and, and then with this, you know, several hundred units coming online, um, it, it really is something we need, if we wanna do the job properly.
So the other thing, too, if I may, is part of this is succession planning, um, Neil, can you tell the board what a building commissioner needs for licenses now?
What a, um, yeah, the, um, for the building inspector, yeah.
Yeah, for an ability inspector.
Basically, a, uh, you, you need to, first of all, um, in, in order to be, to get certified, they've changed the regs, you actually have to be hired, um, if you're going to get certified, uh, so, you, we'd be looking for an, a building inspector that was already certified, so in order to get there, uh, they need at least five years' experience or, you know, a college degree, uh, engineering, that sort of thing, um, and then there's a, a series of tests, is, uh, I think, three tests, there's a lot of studying, a lot of, you know, there's, I've taken the test, you go in, there's nine books you, you bring with you, and, um, covering things such as fire protection and, uh, the state building code itself, uh, American with Disabilities Act, those, those sort of things, so there's a series of three tests to become a local inspector, and then, uh, to become building commissioner is a series of six tests to receive a certification, but any, people who take it, typically, they'll have a lot of experience, you know, in that field also, and, uh, yeah, they, they've really raised the bar, uh, for this position.
Which is a good thing, and, and, but, to go through it's a lot, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And what do you think we can get this person for, what would be PDEAM, or, I don't underst...
I think, I think we're looking at, you know, the starting salary was somewhere fifty-six thousand or so, um...
And you think we could get a person with all these credentials?
We'll find out.
That's, that's the thing, is...
Yeah, yeah.
Now, you mentioned earlier about a handyman for, you know, someone said, you know, you said forty dollars an hour, it sounds like a lot, but it might not be if you want some type of licenses, you know, but... Any other questions or comments?
No. Just to go through the, um...
Bottom line there?
Bottom line, the fiscal year fourteen, twenty fourteen, uh, the appropriation was for two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, uh, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and the town administrators recommended three hundred and one thousand, um, three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, and I presume, Neil, you have no disagreement with the town administrator's request?
Nope.
She's increased based on, from what you were requesting, so, um, those are the numbers.
Great, thank you.
All right, I think you're up next, Neil, right?
Yes, seventy-six zoning board.
Let's get to the zoning board.
Sarah wanted to be here, um, and she really is, you know, very good about coming to meetings and everything, she has a very bad cold, so, we gave her the night off.
Well, she can't say that, because I saw her today, she did not tell me that, she didn't look like she had a cold, Neil, so, I'm gonna tell her that she's on TV, she's gonna know that, I think she had something else watching.
I hope you, I hope, Neil, I think she's setting you up.
You got your part timer.
Unless they just add a ten.
I think they'll struggle through it, okay?
Yeah, so the mission statement of the zoning board of appeals, um, is the mission of the Cituate zoning board of appeals to interpret and apply the zoning bylaws and related Massachusetts statutes to each application, be forced in a fair and impartial manner, and to con, conduct its hearings and meetings in a prompt and professional manner, extending to each member of the public who appears before it a degree of professionalism and courtesy that will reflect positively on the town.
Thank you, looking to go from twenty-six, seven to twenty-eight, seven.
All right, I have one question, and I don't know if it goes to Neil or to the town administrator, in this budget, does it include at least a minimum of four books on land use, which is the treaties that the board should be using?
Three.
Robowski, okay, so three books.
Three.
Perfect.
A three-member board.
Full member.
Or three, three, I gotcha, makes sense, okay.
I mean, we have one in the office...
Ask for five, she got three.
Oh, that's perfect.
Yeah.
We have one in the office, which is up to date, so, you know, somebody...
That's all, I, I just think that some of the members on the board should review them, so have an idea. Got under professional dues?
Yeah, purchase of services.
I think so, yes.
Okay, good, that's all I asked, just wanna make sure we, they'd have that, they should.
So, Neil, just, Nicole does nineteen hours, and then she does...
Sixteen for building, nineteen for zoning. She's, she's paid out of those budgets, but it varies, obviously, some weeks it's all zoning, and other weeks it's...
Oh, do you actually allocate hour by hour?
Yeah, no, it, it varies, if you...
Oh, yeah.
Does both jobs.
All right, so the FY fourteen appropriation was for twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, and what, uh, has been requested and agreed upon, uh, is twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Good. Neil, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Okay, have a good night.
Number sixty-one, Widow's Walk.
Bob, I went golfing on Saturday, couldn't go anywhere, there were a whole bunch of sledders there.
I'm sure it was a nice day to be out there.
It was cold, let me tell ya.
Shall I start with the mission statement?
Sure, while we're getting, it's in the back, guys, drawing...
Sixty-one?
Yes, that's correct.
Widow's Walk Golf Course endeavors to offer the best-valued golf, uh, experience on the South Shore by providing a well-manicured championship layout with friendly customer service. Cituate residents are granted special policies and pricing to encourage a high level of activity from our, our community members. Is the intent of this enterprise operation to offset all expenses through the collection of reasonable usage fees?
Thank you. Budget might be slightly down, from one-three to one-three, about ten thousand dollars, by looking at it quickly.
So just looking at, Bob, just looking at the pricing, you feel comfortable with the pricing, it looks like we're right, right in the thick of it with everybody else, you know?
Yeah, I don't think we've got, we really have room for any kind of price increase, I think if maybe the numbers are coming in bad, the only place I would even consider it would, um, would be possibly membership dues, I think we're kinda light in comparison in that part of the, the, you know, the, the area, but...
But the same, the same plans we have now, what is it?
Same plan.
Eight hundred bucks or whatever it is?
That's, well, that's one of them, that's...
Others, yeah.
The seniors.
Right.
Uh, which is the bulk of our activity.
Right.
Bob, the only, uh, were rounds down this year?
They are.
Okay, you know, weather, competition?
It's, it's everywhere.
Okay.
It's, um, it's not just us, um, certainly, we had tremendous weather the prior year, and, uh, you know, we, you keep getting reminded on what a weather-driven industry it is, because Widow's Walk, I think, was in the best playing condition, um, start to finish this year that it's ever been in, and I thought we had pretty normal weather. As I say, we had particularly good weather, uh, the year that we made the profits, and, and really added to our retained earnings, but, um, it's, it's really, um, it's a tough industry right now, I think that, um, the building craze, um, we simply have too many golf courses now, and when we built, there was nowhere near enough to, to meet demand at that time, so, um, we're really in a position where, uh, some courses need to go under and stay under, uh, I think to get back into a healthy supply and demand situation.
Number of golf is, is, you think, has leveled off?
Um, well, certainly, there's been a decrease, um, you know, in the last, you know, over ten-year period, certainly, um, it is trending downward, um, so it's probably getting to the point where it's starting to level off now, but certainly, um, ten years ago, there were more golfers than there are today.
It's something I never took advantage of, but I did hear it in some of the regulars, was, was that pass that you offered, or, you know, a monthly...
The players' pass?
Yeah, was that something we phased out this year?
No, no, it's, in fact...
Did you change it a little?
No, no, in fact, um, we're trying to, that's one of the things that I'm trying to make, proposing to make a change to, is, um, in allowing for a little bit more sharing of that, um, it was only to be shared with, uh, the purchaser and a spouse or another family member.
Okay.
And I'd like to encourage more of the, you know, we, we sell that in ten-round purchases, so it's basically a prepaid green fee with discounts, according to the amount of, um, commitment you make, so we, we sell a ten-round pass, a twenty-five-round pass, and a fifty-round pass, um, we are, I'm proposing that we, we, um, offer more sharing in the twenty-five and fifty passes.
Like, I could loan, lend it to Tony or John or somebody or something?
You could come out and you could pay for foursomes, just say, if you wanted to do that, with yours.
Oh, foursomes, and...
Yeah, it would be...
Instead of doing, I see what you're saying, so...
It wouldn't be more than, you know, you couldn't use it to pay for eight people on a given day.
No, but you could get a couple, I, that's a good idea.
Something to try to encourage, um, more purchases of it, and certainly, there's, um, you know, uh, there's a much bigger, um, percentage discount when you get up into the fifty play.
Okay.
So, I, you know, there's just a little something that, um, I think is worth a try.
I like to hear you thinking about those things, that's, that's great, you know, anything to stimulate, to, to regain some of those... to stimulate, to regain some of those rounds and so forth.
I'm trying to get creative with, with, I don't really like the third-party processor, you know, the Groupon-type of thing, because you lose too much money.
I agree.
You get such a small piece of the pie, you know, you end up with about a quarter of the going rate, which...
Is that something we've done away with?
Well, we did that one time.
Right.
And we did it in the early stages, and, you know, to be honest with you, we were real early on the Groupon, and of course, now there are a lot of copycats. It turned out that, you know, we thought it would be worth that kind of discount to introduce somebody to the golf course and hope for the return visits. We kinda found that the majority of those people were...
One time.
Yeah, they were kind of discount-only people, and we, I didn't think that the return visit percentage was very good.
You would know. What about making it any more friendly? You've gone as far as you wanna go. I know when I go with Tony, he loses a lot of golf balls, so he's, I'm always having to give them to him, so...
Yeah, appreciate that. Be, well, I don't, I don't know what more.
In the beginning, that was a topic, I know, but...
It's always gonna be a very difficult golf course, and it's...
Because we really don't have the yachting?
There's not much, I mean, between environmental, you know, constraints, and it's just, it's just gonna be difficult. They've thinned out as much as they can. We've had a lot of positive feedback that it's a lot more friendly now than it was when, when it opened, but it's, it's always gonna be a difficult golf course.
Do you know what? I have to tell ya, 'cause I have never played a good round there.
No, you haven't.
I'm the one that actually hits the bad balls. But I have to tell ya, 'cause I've heard a lot of people say, "Oh, it's too difficult to play," and so, sure, they probably go several routes. I keep wanting to go back there, 'cause I'm driven to beat that course one day. And, you know, there are certain holes that I think I should be able to put the ball and do a great job, and I've never done it, the numerous times I've played. So that drives me to go back and play. Plus, the course is in great shape, always has been. And I've noticed you've done some cutting and some clearing to try to augment and improve some of the views at various places, which I think is a really smart thing to do. But anyway, one thing I was gonna point out is, is the number that, you know, we're talking about the debt service, and that's gonna finish, is it in FY seventeen?
Seventeen.
So when we're planning for FY, or the board's planning for FY eighteen, right now, that debt service for last year was three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand dollars. So if you were to plan three years from now, we're gonna have a surplus of presumably over three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. So that's coming really close. So it's a huge profit. The reason why I say that is because you're making comments about how, you know, it's a tough time right now. It's true, because we're servicing this final debt for the final two years. But there are a lot of golf courses that aren't gonna be in the financial position we're in. And it's a great benefit, I don't know about this trolley, I don't know if you heard the trolley, I don't know what that's gonna be, but kinda intriguing. And I have to also say, the other thing, I, I keep saying this every year, if we should start thinking about, is there gonna be a different clubhouse, clubhouse, or doing something, you know, to improve the clubhouse as it stands? You and I've talked about it before events, and I'm like, I think we need to start thinking about it. Whether or not we're gonna spend money, it's another issue, but at least we should plan it and think about it.
It certainly is one of the goals, to start really working and looking at that closely now that we're getting this close, and, and come up with a plan, and see, you know, are we gonna be open to borrowing some money? Are we gonna have to wait until we get enough retained earnings to pay cash for it? I don't know. That's all stuff that, that needs to be discussed with Tricia and the facilities manager.
But it looks good. And like I said, it looks like we're getting on the cusp of being able to have that discussion and dialogue, which is actually at a good position to be, as opposed to saying, "We're in deficits, what are we doing? Let's tear it down, let's do this." But we hear a lot that, obviously, now, coming to the end, it's, it's gonna be a major enterprise revenue generator.
I don't think we'll know until whatever's done is done, whether it be a massive reconstruction or just to pretty the place up. But I, but I think the curb appeal from day one has hurt us drastically, and, and the physical, physical structure as well. So even with minor improvements of paving the, you know, improving the entrance and paving the parking lot, and some, some little things to the clubhouse, even with that, I think we're gonna see, you know, some very positive effects financially. So it's hard to say until we see it, but I'm very convinced that that's what's gonna happen.
Just a couple of questions. The fiscal year fourteen budget has a revenue of one-two-nine-one-two-five. Where, where are we trending there? That's, that seems high. Are we gonna hit that number, or are we, like, how are we looking for this fiscal year?
Well, this, this fiscal year is trending very similar to the previous fiscal year.
Thirteen, so we're gonna be around the one, one-point-two-three?
Part of this is, I'm gonna try to get a little bit more aggressive with filling this golf course without being foolish about it. I think that to go and, and really discount, it cheapens the facility, it cheapens the membership, and so on. But my majority in the works with one vendor, which is called Play More Golf. You know, it's, it's one of these where they sell cards and drive businesses to you, and yes, it's a discounted rate, but it's nowhere near the kind of discounting that you end up suffering with a Groupon-type of, you know...
So what do we think we're aimed for, for fourteen? The 2013 numbers?
Hopefully, a little bit more, because I'm hoping that some of these, some of these programs are gonna go into effect for the second half of this fiscal year. So I'm hoping certainly it's gonna be an improvement. Hopefully, we can get a little bit earlier opening to the season than we did last year.
And the retained earnings, what, do, do we know what those are now?
Thirty-four hundred.
Thirty-four?
Thirty.
Oh, that's it, right there?
Yeah.
Of course, then we just buy a...
Yeah.
Thirty-one thousand.
And we bought the multiplex, I mean, the triplex.
So it's gonna be tough to break even in fourteen, possibly. It'll be, we need a good spring.
Well, it depends on what his budget's approved at.
No, no, for fourteen?
Fourteen.
Yeah, for fourteen. Well, we'll see.
A couple real positive things. You know, I, I notice in the summer, a lot of kids go there and play, and I think you get that because you have good little programs for that. So I, I encourage you to keep that up and do whatever discounts you can get those, 'cause those are the players that are gonna continue playing. The, the golf course, as John said, is in really great shape. I was wondering, is the, we're talking about later the contract for the new company. Do you have any plans for them to, I know a couple of years ago, you, you took certain holes and you really tried to clear it out and make a few holes easier to play. Is any of that built into the contract?
I think it's, it's the same contract that's been, you know, out there from day one, pretty much.
So how would you implement something like this seventeenth hole, you know, somehow opening it up so that it was easier to play, or something? You know, is that part of that code? Or that would be a whole separate?
It all depends on how much it would entail. Certainly, it would, you know, they do a lot of that with their dime, but if it gets to be a major project, then that, that would be...
So they can do some of that stuff in terms of...
Yeah, that was in their proposal, actually, to be, to look at different ways.
Yeah, 'cause I know we had a meeting years ago where we said, you know, and you did a lot of it on certain holes where it was just very, very difficult for the average guy to, to get there, to try and make it a little easier for him.
Soon as there's a little bit of money...
Why are you looking at me, everybody? I'm just staring at me, the average guy.
John's not even near that.
I just need a crossbow. Give me a crossbow up there, and I'll tie a string to it, and it's gone. That's it.
What's that, Torrey Lane? What's that?
And...
He's in the waymill. So I, I do think all the programs that you do for the kids are great. You support the high school team, which, which giving them the ability to play there, and, and supporting them with discounts. I think the golf course does a lot of really good things for the community. So I really, you know, encourage and appreciate all that that you do.
One thing I was just gonna ask.
I just have a quick question. I, I mean, obviously, this is my first one I've done, but I'm looking at the restaurant lease income, and it's all over the place. From oh-nine, it's up and down, up and down. What is the reason for that?
We redid it.
No, no, but I mean, you start with thirty-three, you go thirty-seven, forty-eight, back down to forty-two, down to thirty-five, seven, then you're up to forty-six, four. You know what I mean?
What is that?
Rent the lease.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just wondering why it's all over the place.
I, I think that, I think that there might have been a posting thing. I, I talked to you about that, Nancy. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it.
It hasn't changed that much. The contract was, I think, renewed a year or two.
See what I mean? Oh, it's you, you drop seven, and then you're back up eleven?
I mean, it's not contingent, there's no sales contingency or anything like that. I think it's just a flat fee for rent.
It is, and I don't know if, if they were late posting, like a June...
Oh, timing.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing that I'd...
But it happens a couple different times.
I'm gonna have Nancy take a look at that and just see, but, because it didn't make sense.
Right.
When I was preparing the budget, I did, you know, I did have some concern about that.
Okay.
But I think it's, I think it's gonna turn out to be posting, because in, I think it was overstated in, in thirteen, was it? Let's see.
No, that's the under one.
Yeah, big time.
Twelve, was it? Let's see.
Twelve was forty-two.
Yeah, that was overstated.
Eleven was forty-eight.
I almost...
What about eleven, though? Forty, almost forty-nine, forty-eight, seven-two, five?
I think that's what the contract was. The, we had, he came in for a rebid recently, like, two years ago or something. And I, I thought initially his, his contract was on a gradual, but maybe it was always a flat fee. But the bid came back, and, and he ended up bidding high in order to retain it. But I, I don't recall the specifics, Mark.
I think twelve was overstated, and thirteen was understated, and...
Well, let's go, but we can go back and look at them. When I look at this, thirteen looks wrong to me.
Quick question I had for you, Bob, was, I know that the golf course at, at some point gets officially shut down due to the snow or the weather. Is there any way that maybe in conjunction with the, the company, the...
IGM?
IGM, that they could put signage or something, you know, where people could say, "Okay, you're now free to walk the golf course," so that they'll take their dogs and they run it. The other thing I was thinking is, so at least people have notice, and when not to, when you're gonna say, "Okay, golf is now going back into play."
Yeah, it's up to John.
So a notice requirement. The other thing was, is there any way that they could take a look at the various neighborhoods, like Torrey Lane and some of the ones on Stockbridge, to see if they have some access, that they can go on the golf course from those streets? You know, like, instead of having to go all the way around and drive there, maybe they can get access to the golf course when it's officially shut down. We'll have to probably put fencing up, but in other words, open up the fence, and then people know.
You can at Torrey's Lane.
At Torrey's Lane, you can, okay. I was just wondering about some of the other areas, if there's any way of, see if it's a possibility.
That's probably the only real...
About the condos by five or six over there?
You'd have to build them.
They don't, they, they don't, they wouldn't want that.
They don't have access over there.
No. I wasn't sure off of Stockbridge, if there was a street that Beer's Lane or any of the other ones is a possibility.
I don't think that's an easy way over.
No, okay.
I think the only real easy one, and we've blocked off that gate at Torrey's Lane, with, with a boulder, but, I mean, certainly you could get there. I, I don't, I think there's a little parking area at the end of that road. I don't know whether the Torrey's Lane people would, would want that activity or not.
I'm only saying, it's a public, you know, people are using it literally like a park. I was, I was shocked to see how many people were there over the weekend, which is great. Think that we have a, something that's great that we can use during the summer, and the spring, and the fall for golf, and then during the offseason, people use it for other recreational purposes.
As far as the signage, we did do the sign, I mean, I, I tape it on my message when dog walking starts. I put it on the internet on our site when dog walking starts and ends. And we did put the signs up in advance. And to be honest with you, when we get into a daily weather permitting basis, and the course is not supposed to be open to, to dog walking, if they know the course is closed, they just ignore it.
Gotcha. Just thoughts.
Right. Do we read off the numbers, the bottom-line numbers? One-three-eleven?
Sure. Fiscal year fourteen, the appropriation was one million, three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, and this year, the recommendation was for one million, three-hundred-one-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob, thank you again.
I think the last one, budgets, is one-thirty-five. Finance Director, Town Accountant, Nancy? Cut it up.
This is...
It's a graceful way to do that, wasn't it?
This is where, Nancy, you say, "You know, this is my first time. I'm just starting my job. I really, you gotta take pity on me," you know?
Gotcha.
That's all right.
Nancy, I had asked everyone if they wouldn't mind reading their mission statement. It looks to be fairly short. Do you have a copy of it right there in front of you?
I do. The mission statement for the Finance Director, Town Accountant's Office is to provide accurate, comprehensive, and accessible information to the citizens and officials of the town, and to account for the management of town finances in accordance with federal, state, and local laws.
Thank you.
What is the technical services line? I always get confused in what department?
Sure. The technical services line is our independent audit.
That's the audit. And it was eighty last year?
Yes, and that accounts for the interim Town Accountant Services that were procured.
Right. Is it the same firm? Does anybody do a three-year with them?
We have a three-year with them that's expiring, and we're going to take our option for another year with them. And it's Powers and Sullivan.
So last year was two-fifty-seven, and this year it's two-fifty-two?
That's what I see?
Yes.
Personal services went up, but the, well, it really didn't, well, it did, but part of that eighty was really personal services anyways, so...
Pretty straightforward. John, Marty, or Tony, does that, do it? All right. Read that number again, somebody, or I don't know, it doesn't matter?
Two-fifty-two, one-ninety-seven for fifteen compared to two-fifty-seven, one-one-nine of last year.
Isn't so bad, was it?
Getting off easy.
Wait till next year.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Nancy, thank you.
That does it for our budgets for this evening. If anyone has any walk-ins...
I think this should be at the end of the meeting. I like that, that's good.
Moving over that, then, number fourteen is the report, a week ahead from the town administrator.
First of all, I want to report...
Can I interrupt you one second?
Oh, sure.
Dave, Mark, thank you, guys. I appreciate...
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. All right, go ahead. I'm sorry, Tricia.
Hold on, hold on, too much...
That's the advisory committee for all you. What'd you say, thousands of viewers?
Yeah, no, John said, I think.
One, two, two quick things, one longer one. The town received notification from EOEA that we got an electric charging station grant for thirty-seven-thousand, five-hundred dollars. We put in for this grant a few months ago. So for people who have electric cars or electric, whatever, we will have an electric charging station now. We got a grant to do that. So...
What does that mean, exactly?
Probably around here, but we have to decide the location.
So you hook up to it for free?
Yep.
For how long?
Yep.
Perpetuity, or?
No, if you need a charge, and you come...
I know what I'm saying, like, how long do we have that for? Before, sooner or later, gonna say we're gonna have to charge somebody for electricity or something.
They're just gonna start charging for the sun.
Like, free gas for the rest of your life, right?
Is it a solar? What, what power is it?
I have no idea.
You can tell we're green.
I know where Rick Murray's gonna go.
I did it one time.
My electric car's been in the shop.
Waiting for a charge.
Oh, you'd be getting those Teslas, huh? Is that it?
We have extra capacity right now. We're trying to sell our electricity, so we can shut it off. We can pull the plug if it becomes a problem. So anyway, I'm happy to do that.
Well, that's great, I think.
A couple of weeks ago, the board made a request to the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services and Technical Assistance Section to do a management analysis and look at the timetables for the budget. They've accepted that request, and will commence work in March. And I, it's a three-to-four-month period, and so they've agreed to do that. So that's a good move. I think it was at your last meeting that I spoke at length about the FEMA appeals, and one was accepted and one wasn't accepted, and I talked about the one that was accepted, and the basis of that appeal, and how we were required to submit more information to FEMA upon their request for the appeal associated with the Woods Hole group. That is due, what's tomorrow, Wednesday? Thursday, that will be hand-delivered to Boston. Both Duxbury and Marshfield are following similar trajectories with us, and we've been working together, having conference calls together, sharing costs together. There's an additional cost for them to supply the additional information. I believe it's thirty-three-hundred dollars for us, times three. So Woods Hole agreed to provide all that information and So, um, Woods Hole agreed to provide all that information and turn it around a very short deadline, so we will meet all the requirements that FEMA. Now, the second, um, appeal that we had with ransom and engineering, um, essentially FEMA told us that they did not accept the methodology that ransom used, um, in their appeal. So Woods Hole took one approach, um, ransom took another. The, there's some concern around that because this is the same methodology that FEMA accepted in Southern Maine last year, and now they're not accepting it, and so Cumberland County and York Counties in Maine had new maps, and even though the same methodology was used for the Castle Bay area, FEMA did not use it for Cumberland County and York County, Maine, so, um, because the same methodology we used here was used up there. So they're all, um, lobbying and very upset about FEMA's application of that. However, um, because FEMA didn't buy into the methodology for our second appeal, doesn't, it's not the end of the road for us. We can go to what's called a scientific panel, resolution panel. And what that is, is it's a free-of-charge, um, to-apply panel, um, that will allow us to make our case before an impartial tripartite, um, group of, um, technical and specialized individuals, not FEMA people, to, to make our case to them again. And so I had a rather lengthy phone conference today with ransom and Marshfield, um, about this very issue. And what it is, is, um, hold on, let me look at my notes, um, is our basic contention is that the data that, um, FEMA is using is more conservative than the elevations in the Blizzard of Seventy-Eight. So what they're saying is, and we all know that the Blizzard of Seventy-Eight is considered the Hundred Year Flood. And, um, so what the subcontractor for FEMA did, called STAR, was that, um, the Blizzard of Seventy-Eight, the total tide total was eleven point five inches, and FEMA is using seventeen, I mean, eleven point five feet. FEMA is using seventeen feet. So, um, and this is in Situate Harbor, not for the town as a whole, Situate Harbor specifically. So, um, and some of the things that we submitted in this, um, appeal were out of the manual that FEMA and their subcontractor uses for some of their basic guidelines, that they didn't even follow in their application. So all this has to be, um, submitted tomorrow morning. My email, I was checking my email at the beginning of the meeting because we have to fill out a rather extensive form to go to the scientific panel. And then they have, I believe it's a sixty-day period, don't hold me to that, Jessica, um, where the panels convened, and, um, we get to, to have another bite at the apple, as it were. And again, we're working with Marshfield on this, um, and, um, I will keep you posted. Dave Ball, I sent him an email earlier today, wanted to know what was happening. I talked earlier about what's happening in Congress this week about bigot waters. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. General number fifteen is to award the contract for the maintenance, um, portion of Willows Wharf. We had mentioned that a while ago. Looks like it's gonna stay with IGM, on the looks of it.
So it looks like there were two bidders?
Two or three, yes, two. I think the third, the third took the RFP out and missed the deadline by fifteen minutes.
There was no fault in the own, they're, they're...
Oh, not our fault, no.
Yeah, the bid deadline was, uh, ten AM and it arrived at ten-thirty.
Right.
FedEx Express. It was supposed to be here for nine AM.
And I just was gonna note that we have a nice, you know, uh, note from a lot of local guys who use the course on a regular basis, much what Bob was alluding to, you know, kinda like the bread and butter of the course, and, and they were saying nothing but nice things about, you know, the current company, and that's just nice to hear. But, um, if there aren't any questions or comments, I'd accept a motion.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for golf maintenance to International Golf Maintenance of, uh, Champions Gate, Florida, for three years with optional one-year extension in years four and five at the sole discretion of the Board of Selectmen for a first-year contract price of four hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred eleven dollars, a second-year contract price of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars, and a third-year contract price of four hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
A motion and a second, please.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Told. Gender item number sixteen, award the contract for the schematic design of the public safety complex.
So, um, this contract, um, for the schematic design has taken a little bit longer than we anticipated. There was a number of machinations going back and forth between the architect and town council. Those were all finally resolved last week. The contract that you've seen we're comfortable with on both sides, and thank you, Kim, for catching, that the motion should actually say to award four sixty thousand, um, which was the price that was actually in the RFP as a fixed price, so... And Doran Whittier's started their work. We actually suspended their work pending the execution of this contract and the board's vote.
So the sixty thousand dollar contract, it's to look at three different sites for a public safety building.
Do the schematic design.
Current one, current one here.
Ellis.
Ellis and Purple Dinosaur. And it goes from schematics to designs, is that what you said?
Yep, just not, not full architecture or whatever, just schematic on, and he's already met with the chiefs, so...
Local company, Tricia, I just was looking to see.
Um, yes. They're out in Newburyport, but Don Moll, she actually lives in town in New...
Oh, there, yeah, right there, great, super. Thought there was a connection.
He's not on planning anymore, is he?
No.
No.
That's great. A motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen award the contract and approve the letter of agreement for professional services for Doran Whittier Architects for the Public Safety Complex Feasibility Study and Schematic Design Services, DNW Project Number One Three Dash O Six Seven One, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seventeen, to re-vote, um, donation of land on Shadwell Road.
This is what I discussed before, beginning of December, about trying to get the property and try to use it. Of course, one of the problems that we found out at the last meeting from Town Administrator is that in order for us as a board to take it back as a town, we'd need to have to have a town meeting in order to ask the town meeting to authorize it. That being said, that means we'd have to wait until April, uh, to when we have town meeting. Or we could vote to amend our prior vote so that it would go to, um, the town, but for conservation purposes, not necessitating a town vote at that time. I would probably propose to the board, given the nature of the gift, we should probably vote to amend our prior vote under the, uh, instead of taking it for the Board of Selectmen, that we take it for conservation restriction purposes.
Does anyone have a problem with that?
No.
Who's the aide, don't you, it doesn't have to go to?
Them first?
Who?
It goes to ComCom.
Is there a trust or something that has to hold it, or how's that, how's that work?
No, it just goes...
It just goes to ComCom, Town of Situate.
Right. So...
Want to rescind our vote from twelve-three first?
I would just vote to amend that vote instead of rescinding it. I'd just say, I move to amend that vote of December thirtieth, twenty thirteen, um, and vote that we, um, accept the parcel known as number thirty-nine dash twenty-six dash twenty-five dash O dash R, small j, twenty-six Shad Road, uh, Shadwell Road, um, for purposes of conservation and to be placed in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. Second.
I'll accept that. A motion and a second.
Second.
I have that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Takes care of seventeen. Some appointments on the Public Building Commission, um, as I mentioned earlier, user members for the library project.
Move the Board of Selectmen appoint Jesse Finney, Library Director, and Karen Canfield, Library Trustee, as quote, "user members" unquote, of the Public Buildings Commission for the library project.
Second.
John, a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, number nineteen, correspondence minutes.
Do we have anything else besides that letter? That's it. We only had that letter we did earlier, right?
Okay, yeah, I don't see anything else.
And move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the regular session minutes for December seventeenth, twenty thirteen.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here, so three to abstain.
No, you were for the seventeenth, right?
No, I was not.
Oh.
All right, um... I'll move the, uh, Board of Selectmen vote to accept the executive session minutes not to release of January twenty-second, twenty thirteen.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And, um... Just looking at it.
Oh, man, that's a different...
Just a second, um, please cross out, um, eight twenty-one, thirteen, as far as executive session.
Yep.
I did that, right, okay.
Yeah, eight twenty, eight twenty-one, so that'd be August. All right, so I'll move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the executive session minutes, again, not to release, of June eighteenth, twenty thirteen, July twenty-third, twenty thirteen, and December seventeenth, twenty thirteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I'll, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Except for executive session twelve-seventeen, Kim, I was, again, not here.
Right.
Okay?
Oh, okay, yep.
All right, so it takes care of our minutes, correspondence, other business. I'm gonna start tonight, if you guys don't mind. Been, uh, on the board for almost eighteen years, and almost seventeen years, Kim Conover has been our secretary. As we know, but much of the public doesn't, she's gonna move on to big, you know, bigger and better things, things she's always wanted to do. She didn't really want me to do this, but I, I, you know, I have to, you know, I... Part of our job, you know, especially as chairman, we constantly talking to people at town hall. I cannot ever remember once, not even, if I couldn't reach Kim, she called me back. And each time one of us has ever had to call her, she's always been upbeat. I've never talked to her, she's been in a bad mood, no matter what happens here at town hall, no matter who comes in with a complaint, they're our first line of defense. And I don't know what it's gonna be like without Kim, without hearing her friendly voice. I just wish her the best, you know, um, and I'm gonna miss hearing you at the other end of the phone, that's for sure. Thank you very much for everything you've done, Kim.
Thank you.
And I hope I didn't embarrass you too much. Thank you.
I much appreciate it. It's been a wonderful, wonderful job, wonderful experience, working with all of you. It's just been, it's been amazing for me.
The town is very, very lucky to have you. I've never had a person say that you misspoke, mistreated them in any way.
And you are very helpful when new selectmen come on board. You teach them the ropes. You get, you, you, you're very patient and you're, you're very helpful through the process, so I appreciate everything you've done for me as well. Now tell us some dirt. You've seen a lot of selectmen.
Who was the... I'm gonna turn it over to Tricia before I let you guys speak, if that's all right.
Well, um, Kim was also very helpful to me. She was actually my first point of contact, applying for and interviewing and negotiating the contract, and, um, I thought she ran the show and you didn't need a town administrator, but, um, um, you know, everybody... My, we had that, all those wonderful proclamations, like the one Marty read earlier this evening. Kim writes and researches, and she does, one of the wonderful things she does is makes those proclamations personal and all the myriad licensing and stuff. Her, she's a consummate professional. She, her attention to detail and her meticulousness, I've, I've never seen in the quality that she has. But, um, most of all, I think, is, um, her customer service skills, and our offices are particularly blessed with Sheila and Kim, um, to really treat people with respect and help them. But the one thing I, I have to say about Kim, um, that I love and I'll miss the most, is she, is her kindness. She's incredibly kind, and I'll miss... Thank you very much, that was very nice of you, Kim.
Thank you, Tricia. I'll turn it over to you, other board members, John.
Oh, first and foremost, we're gonna miss the candy jar, Kim. I mean, that's the one thing I can always count on, is getting candy, um... But I think the one thing that you learn as you begin to work in the workforce, whether it's public or private, um, is that you work with a lot of people, and, um, it's great, there are all types, sorts, you know? People you enjoy working with, people who don't work well, people who are lousy to work with, some people you just can't wait until they leave the job. The sad part is, is when you have somebody who's not just a good worker, but a great worker. And, um, unfortunately, it's sad to see you go, because that's what this town is losing. We're losing it from our standpoint, I'm being selfish, because I hate to see you go. It's always, Sean's absolutely right, um, whether it's calling and trying to get information, um, whether it's emailing, you're very responsive, you're quick, uh, you're very professional, chiming and concurring with what Trish is saying, you know? All that and more, and I think that's what's really difficult when you lose a quality person. Now, recognizing you're going to do other things that you've wanted to do, and I wish you well in that endeavor, but as I said to you when you called me, you know, I really hate to see you go, because the town actually is the one who's gonna be the biggest loss on it, because they're the ones who interact with you the most with the calls and, and all the work that's done, whether it's the licensing or the minutes or the, um, um, you know, anything we're doing, the policies, you know, it's just, it's a breath of fresh air to be able to call you and say, "Kim, what do you think about this? What's going on? What's that?" That's something that we're gonna lose, and that's something the town's gonna miss. And all I can say is, I wish you well in Jim and your endeavors. We'll see around town, I know that, but it's just, it's, I hate to see it leave, because it's nice to have a constant you can rely on, and when that's removed, um, you really miss it when it's gone, and I know we will. So I wish you well, and I thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Kim, I just wanna say, I mean, I didn't have that much time to work with you, but anytime I needed anything...
That's why she's leaving, Mike.
But just anything I've needed, you've pointed me in the right direction, and if, if you didn't have an answer, which most times you did, you certainly got it to me quickly, and, and good luck with everything you're doing.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll see you around town.
Oh, you definitely will. I won't, I won't be shy about it. New board and committee appointees.
Good point.
Thank you all very much, I very much appreciate all your words. It means a lot to me. It's been a pleasure working with the town of Situate and working with all of you, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. If we don't have any other business, I'll...
No.
Just one, a couple of real quick things. I just wanted to, again, thank everybody for the storm. This went very, very smoothly. I was surprised, although the media was trying to sensationalize it, um, you know, the work of, uh, the DPW, the Fire, the Police, Tricia, and all the other people that were here really was phenomenal.
So that's not the, that's not the Globe or the American, we're talking about the TV stations that were sensationalizing. The ones who put two helicopters in the air Saturday night just to see if they could, you know, get some kind of...
I, I did a television thirty-second spot, and they were disappointed that I wasn't saying anything. Well, but, but isn't the flooding bad? Isn't, you know, and I'd give us something, so I was...
I was standing by my car, and I started for the first time in like two days to leave, and I went over to say goodbye to the chief, and he was live on Channel Five. And I was like, oh, my God, and I walked out, and there were three more helicopters headed, and I had to come back here. I was here for another three hours. All for naught.
Well, thank God, you know, thank goodness, you know, there's always the potential for a problem, and we're lucky in this one that we didn't get anything. Just a quick sports update, we're in winter season, basketball games, hockey games. Basketball's team just won tonight, a little while ago over there. They won the Ducksbury Tournament last weekend in their four-and-oh, and I think the hockey team is maybe three and two. They're having a good season as well. And, uh, just wanna add one thing, I went over to the studio over there, um, Citrocable Television, 'cause we're trying to film these games and get them on, on the publics, so if you have any interest in helping film it or have content that you want, they're looking for it over there. Um, and it was really impressive. I don't know if you guys have been over there to look at it.
It's unbelievable.
There's a lot of equipment, really, that potentially do a lot of stuff there. So I think we're, we're on the brink of, of doing stuff there. It's really just content that we're waiting to come through the door, but...
Tony, on that, and, and Tricia, with the possibility of like our strategic plan with gates and everything, it's, and granted, I don't know if the, um, SCTV is gonna still remain at the high school, but is it possible to like do these in the new facilities or the renovated facilities from the high school or from one location instead of having somebody in the back of the room do it? In other words, literally have the cameras set up in the room so that you could tape it from another site to just put the cameras on and not have to have somebody physically come? You could have one person at one location.
I don't know, I don't know, maybe.
Just something I've seen from long time.
I'll tell you one thing, this room is about fifty degrees warmer than the room over there. I'm sure she's happy to be here. But, um, but, uh, no, it's a very good facility, if you can get over and look at it, and again, reaching out to people out there that wanna get involved in public television, um, who have different ideas, the, the tools are there to, to put stuff into production, so I wanna thank John for, uh, giving me the tour there.
On your sports, um, update there, Tony, do you know anyone on the... On your sports, um, update there, Tony, do you know anyone on the basketball team, any chains?
Quite a, quite a lot of good players over there, yeah.
All right, I just didn't know if any family members or anything.
I heard, I heard Brian James, give him a little kudos tonight. Hit a three-pointer with nineteen seconds left to beat Whitman, so.
All right, okay, all right. Well, thank you very much, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn at eight fifty-nine PM.
In a second.
Second.